So this with this one, let me know.
We're live, we can begin.
Uh, the screen is not. Green is good. Good, Carlo?
We are, yes.
Okay, good morning. This is a New York, oh, good morning. This is a New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for May 22nd, 2023. No public testimony is permitted during the review session.
Um, yes. Good morning, everybody. I just want to reiterate that we are transitioning to hybrid mode, first went to the executive order, which is still in effect to, as I understand it, till June of 20th or so. Um, so.
Okay. I just want to let members of the public here and electeds that are here that this, right now, we're doing the review session, so no public testimony is permitted. Once we go through the calendar for the cases that are scheduled today, we will then take a break and then commence with the public hearing, which will then afford the public and elected officials an opportunity to provide testimony. So right now, we're in a review session. We're going to go out of order. And the first case that we're going to discuss is item number 14, 2022 69A through 75A, 2001 Barto Avenue.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Um, we received, uh, this is, uh, an appeals application, uh, appeals of a New York City, uh, DOB's determination to revoke permits of an advertising sign located in the C7 zoning district at the subject site. Um, DOB revoked seven signs permit, um, that on, um, August 12th, 2022, uh, for being located within 200 feet of an arterial highway. Um, uh, appellant states that based on procedural history detailed by, um, by its documents, um, that, uh, in recognizing the distance of 322 feet between the monopole signs and the arterial highway, in this case, New England thruway, uh, Department of Buildings and Department of City Planning acknowledged that the distance of the site and the sign being more than 200 feet from the arterial highway meets zoning resolution section 32 dash 662, that is regarding the distance, uh, to be maintained from an arterial highway. The question posed by the appellant to the boards are, um, what are the boundaries of the New England thruway? And what is the distance from the nearest boundary of the New England thruway to each of the signs? Uh, there are three sign structures that exist on the side. Um, I think one is called the lollipop sign, the other one is called the tri- uh, triple pole sign, and the other, the third one is the tower sign. As you may recall, the board had reviewed, um, Barto one and two, which is related to the tower sign. Um, the appellant states, um, that as part of administrative and judicial proceedings, the distance of the sign beyond 200 feet from the thruway was established. So this is my, um, and now I'm going to discuss my thinking on all of this. Um, the distance discussed, uh, the distance was discussed but was not part of making a determination for Barto one and Barto two, as, um, as to whether it was, um, uh, you know, but two big signs or two sets of 27 signs. Really, the question before us, what is a sign and what is not a sign? That's what was being deliberated when we were reviewing Barto one and Barto two. Um, so I, I do not believe the procedural and the, um, the administrative history of the documentation holds binds us to that distance. We, so we need to, uh, reassess the information that has been provided. Uh, in its response, uh, DOB, uh, refers to the Department of City Planning's November 27th, 2019 letter, which was based on a 1948 map as approved by Board of Estimates on March 19th, 1948. The title of the 1948 map is "Established the Lines and Grades of New England Thruway Between Hutchinson River Parkway Extension at Baychester Avenue and the Northern Boundary Line of the City of New York." The 1948 map was primarily for establishing the lines and grades of New England thruway, and it involved realignment of several streets, bow- bordering the thruway and the elimination of streets within the thruway. Baychester Avenue was included in that realignment, and the Board of Estimate 1948 Resolution states the following, and I quote, "Resolved that the Board of Estimate hereby establishes roadway and sidewalk widths for the New England thruway." Um, really bold, including its ex- its easterly and westerly bold service streets from Hutchinson River Parkway Extension at Brackner Boulevard to the city line Borough of the Queens in accordance with the roadway and sidewalk treatment for this street as shown on map number 11199, approved by the Board of Estimates on March 18, 1948, calendar number 75 dash A, modifying and establishing the lines and grades of the street system within the territory boundary approximately by Hutchinson River Parkway Extension, um, Eli Avenue, Barto Avenue, Grace Avenue, um, Hammersley Avenue, Ederson, Edson, Anita Place, et cetera, um, said the map bearing the signature of the acting president of the Borough of the Bronx dated January 29, 1947. I read all of this, and as I look through it, it says, "including its easterly and westerly service road," which in this case is Baychester Avenue being one of them. So, um, DOB also provided the Bronx section map, which is also known as the Monument Map, from April 11th, 1948, and from September 17th, 1996. These are the maps. Sorry. What happened?
Hello?
Are we not being recorded? Yeah, with the sign.
Hello?
You have to start all over again? We are signed up?
Hello? Hello? Come here.
Oops. We have to start all over again? We don't have any attendees on the Zoom.
My screen says we're still in a practice session.
Are we going to, should we just go on the same page?
Yeah, no, the webinar never started.
It never started?
No.
But it's on YouTube. I think just to-
We never let the public in.
All right. Let's just wait for the technology to catch up, and then we will start fresh. I think we will have to start fresh, just to be on the same side. It says start webinar. In my screen, it says you're, you're in practice session. So let's start from scratch again? Yeah.
I mean, it looks like it's fine on this end.
Can we verify?
Let me just confirm, okay?
Yes, we just want to confirm.
Chase?
Yeah, we now, we now have our attendees.
We're fine?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let's start again.
But Tony, if you would bring it from the top. Tony, we can't hear you.
Is your microphone on?
Sorry. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for May 22nd, 2023. Uh, there is no public testimony during the review session. Uh, we will begin with, um, calendar number four, item number 14, 2022 69A through 2022 75A, 2001 Barto.
Before we start, I just want to reiterate that we are tran- uh, we are transitioning to hybrid mode, first into the executive order, which is still in effect. So with regards to the, uh, case number 14, um, this is an appeals, uh, application, uh, of a New York City, uh, Department of Buildings, uh, determination to revoke a permit for an advertising sign located in a C7 zoning district at the subject site. Um, um, DOB revoked seven sign permits on August 12th, 2022 for being located within 200 feet of an arterial highways. Um, Appellant has provided its documentation and it states, "based on the procedural history that has been detailed by these documents," the Appellant states, "that in recognizing the distance of 322 feet between the monopole signs and the arterial highway, in this case, New England thruway, Department of Buildings and Department of City Planning acknowledged that the distance of the site and the sign being more than 200 feet from the arterial highway meets zoning resolution section 32 dash 662, which is distance to be maintained from an arterial highway." Um, the question posed by the appellant to the board are, uh, what are the boundaries of the New England thruway? And what is the distance from the nearest boundary of the New England thruway to each of the signs? Um, three sign structures exist at the subject, uh, lot, uh, subject zoning lot. Uh, one is called the lollipop sign, the other one is the triple pole sign, and the third one is the tower sign, as the board may recall. Um, the board had, uh, heard, um, uh, several, um, appeals, um, Barto one and Barto two, uh, with regards to tower sign. Um, this was a 70 to, um, nine, 190 foot high, um, monopole sign, um, that was in dispute. Um, the appellant states that as part of the administrative and judicial proceedings that took place as part of Barto one and two, the distance of the signs beyond, um, the distance of the sign was beyond 200 feet from the arterial thruway was already established. Um, the distance that was discussed but was not part war, uh, but was not part of making a determination for Barto one and Barto two. This is my opinion, uh, as to whether, um, when we were reviewing Barto one and Barto two, uh, while the distance was discussed, um, the focus of the discussion and all our deliberation was based on whether uh, the sign that was posed on, proposed on the monopole, was it two big signs of, or set up two, uh, or two sets of 27 signs? So really, the question that was before us was what is a sign and what is not a sign, in person to the zoning regulation? So I think we do have all the rights to review the documents that have been provided, um, by the appellant and also the Department of Buildings' argument and, uh, and make a determination with regards to the distance. So in its, uh, documents, the DOB, uh, refers to Department of City Planning's November 27th, 2019 letter, which was based on a 1948 map as approved by the Board of Estimates on March 19th, 1948. The title of the 1948 map is "Established Lines and Grades of New England Thruway Between Hutchinson River Parkway Extension at Baychester Avenue and the Northern Boundary Line of the City of New York." The 1948 map was primarily for establishing the lines and grades of New England thruway, and it involves realignment of several streets bordering the thruway and the elimination of the streets within the thruway. Baychester Avenue was included in that realignment. Board of Estimates 1948 Resolution states the following, and I quote, "Resolved that the Board of Estimate hereby establishes roadway and sidewalk width for New England thruway, including its easterly and westerly service streets from Hutchinson River Parkway Extension at Brackner Boulevard to the city line, Borough of the Bronx, in accordance with the roadway and, um, sidewalk treatment for this street as shown on map number 11199, approved by the Board of Estimates on March 18, 1948, calendar number 75A, modifying and establishing the lines and grades of the street system within the territory of boundary approximately by Hutchinson River Parkway Extension, Eli Avenue, Barto Avenue, Grace Avenue, Hammersley Avenue, Edson Avenue, Anita Place, et cetera, said the map bearing the signature of the acting president of the Borough of the Bronx and dated January 29, 1947." What was critical in this statement is that New England thruway, including its easterly and westerly service road, and, um, based, based on that, Baychester is one of those, uh, service roads. So with that, um, I further looked at the analysis that's been provided, and DOB also provided the Bronx section map, which is also known as the Monument Map, from, uh, April 11th, 1948, and from September 17th, 1996. These are the maps that are used to measure width, length, and grade of map streets. Surveyors rely on these maps to show, uh, the boundaries of streets. Both of the maps shows Baychester Avenue and New England thruway as one road, and provided an explanation, and it provided an explanation regarding the 19, um, uh, sorry, DOB provided an explanation regarding the 1966, um, alteration map, which did not amend any portion of the Baychester Avenue between Barto Avenue and Ulrich Street. The explanatory notes indicated that the lines as street line or east, uh, or easement line heretofore established and here, hereby, uh, retink. Upon review of the documents provided, I concur with DOB's assessment, especially the Bronx section map from, from 19, um, I think 1966, and, um, um, which shows the subject block abating New England thruway m- matches the same dimension as shown in the, um, 19, uh, sorry, the 1996 map shows the same dimension as shown in the 1966 city map, um, that the appellant relied on. The Bronx section map establishes that the subject site butts New England thruway and an arterial highway, and thus, the entire site is located within 200 feet of an arterial highway, and the signs located on the subject site is contrary to the, contrary to zoning resolution section 32 dash 662. Also, the New York City online street map shows Baychester Avenue as part of the New England thruway and not as a separate street. So this is, um, a question I have for Department of Buildings to confirm if zoning resolution section 32 dash 67 is also applicable here. Per zoning resolution, um, uh, 32 dash 67, special provisions applying along district boundary, there are two residential districts that are mapped within 100 feet of the street line. Uh, R4 district, that is mapped to the west, and, um, possibly R6 district to the north. So according to zoning resolution section 32 dash 67, no advertising sign facing at an angle of less than 165 degree away from such our, uh, residential, uh, district shall, shall not be permitted, and all other signs facing less than, um, such an angle must conform to all the sign regulations applicable in C1 zoning district. So, the language of the zoning resolutions 32 dash 662 is clear, and also is the application, um, by Department of Buildings. So when the language is clear, one need not go to the intent, but even if we were to go to the intent of the sign regulations, it is not to locate signage, uh, sign regulation, it is not to locate signage without limits abating residential use and arterial highway and public park. The subject site is a residue of a C7 zoning district that was left unmapped, that is abating R6 and R4 zoning district and arterial highway, allowing signage of any height and without size limits on a 21,000 square foot parcel would lead to unintended consequences and an app, with an app, with the application of the signage regulation. While C7 zoning districts are specifically designated for large, open amusement park, and this is, I quote, from the Department of City Planning website, "The current use on the site is anything but that." Um, as we all know, all zoning districts have signage regulations except in C65, C67, and C7. Um, the restriction on the signage is related to the use and proximity to arterial highway and public park and residential use. So in C1, C2 districts, uh, they have more stringent, uh, restrictions compared to that in an R8 district. I'm discounting C65 and C7 district because these are mapped only in Midtown Manhattan and governed by special Midtown District regulations. So that leaves us with C7. Unlike C7 district, even in C8 zoning districts, where, um, also residential and community facility is not permitted, there is a restriction on size and height. So I, um, as I look through documents that's been provided, which makes it very clear as to the zoning regulations, uh, that is applicable in terms of measuring the distance from an arterial highway and the intent. I, I believe, um, that the signage regulation and its intent, um, that is left here as a, as a forgotten zoning district, unfortunately, um, uh, would lead to an absurd outcome. So I conclude with that, and I agree with DOB's determination. Um, we also, I just want to alert everybody, we also received a letter from the Council of River Bay Corporation, also known as Co-op City. I hope everybody had a chance to look through that. Okay. So, um, Vice Chair Shiva.
Uh, thank you, Chair. That was, uh, very thorough, and I agree with, uh, all of your statements. I'd just like to add that the applicant erroneously relies on dicta in court holdings and wears clauses in our resolution in an attempt to argue that the issues of the signs' distance from the thruway has already been determined. Dicta is not a court holding. Our resolution is our holding. When the board resolves something, that is the board's holding. The question of the distance itself was never before the board as a question on appeal or, uh, before any other tribunal by that matter. And it's academic that we or any other tribunal is not confined by dicta. Further, it's my position that the board should not opine in applicant's remarks that rely on equity, as there's no application before the board relying on equity. And those are my totality of comments in addition.
Thank you. Commissioner Utley-Brown.
I agree with the points made by both the Chair and the Vice Chair. But to speak a little further on it, for me, the crux of the case is based on the determination of the eastern boundary of the New England thruway. And for me, while the appellant has offered their own layer surveys that support its argument, those surveys are based on observations and measurements taken in the field, and the relevance of this for this type of case, to me, is questionable. The determination is more appropriately based on the city maps, which are the official record. And whereas the, the DOB and the Department of City Planning have based their determinations on those city maps, and those city maps appear to be clear, most especially what, um, resonated for me was the 1996 Bronx Monument map that shows that the eastern boundary of the New England thruway actually extends over Baychester Avenue at this location. It's not even visible at this location. So therefore, I find the, uh, Department of Buildings determination and the evidence that they presented to be more convincing in this case.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I, um, I agree with all what is being said. Um, I would like to add something on, um, some particular points, including number one, the distance. Uh, while I acknowledge that the distance was mentioned in part two and number two two, I don't think it was the subject of a be, of appeal back then that included whether the distance is 100 or 300 or 500. What we looked at back then was irrelevant to the distance. So sometimes when, when we receive an, like, a submission on an application with something that's not relevant, we do not comment on the accuracy of that, just because the subject before us is, is the subject that we should be looking at, and we're bound to that. So this is, this is on the, um, on the distance. The second point is, I would say that I did look at the DOB submission, and it does include tons of evidences that the, uh, boundary of the, uh, New England thruway is actually the boundary that, that western boundary of the lot itself. I believe the lot is 5141. So i- i- it's crystal clear to me as an engineer and someone who has some, some experience on land surveying, that, that, that subject lot is immediately adjacent to the thruway. This is being established by the 1948 map and its resolution, which I don't believe the applicant is, is disputing this here. Uh, it sounds like he's, he's okay with, uh, accepting the notion that the 1948 map, it clearly indicates that the lot is immediately adjacent to the thruway. Then moving forward to, um, to the 1996 and the 1966, if you look at the own applicant's submission on his own statement of appeal, and if you just copy and paste some of the links that he put in the footer, for example, the one on page 11, if someone just copy and paste this, and I, I just want to, uh, show when I, when I did so, what did I get? And this is what you get when you copy and paste. It takes you to the city map, the current. And I care about the current map. And the current map, when you just highlight the street features and the street names, look at this, that, that thruway and Baychester is just one map element, meaning that the subject lot, this lot, is actually immediately adjacent, uh, to the thruway. This is crystal clearing. When you look at the, uh, that map from the 1996, the, on the Borough President, uh, website, let me just stop there and, and. 30 seconds. Again, when you go to the Borough President website, and, and you click on map portion 45, and it takes you to an older map that's clearly indicating that the, 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 like, that, that border, that boundary for the thruway, again, it's immediately adjacent to the subject lot. Uh, probably this is a more clear version here. Again, here. Same thing. So from these two maps together, it's crystal clear that from 1996 until the that, that, that adjacent lot, the subject lot, is, is clearly adjacent to the thruway. So, like, where to measure the distance, the 200 feet from, for me, it's Dundee. And I have seen the, that the applicant, uh, like, hovered on, 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 uh, some other issues, like, uh, some legal issues, like, there is judicar and, and, and these kind of issues. I don't believe these issues are applicable here. They are irrelevant. And, and that's why I don't want to comment on him. Uh, one more thing, when the, uh, when I read through the statement of appeal, I got the impression that the applicant is trying to confuse the record because they, they referenced, uh, revocation letter from, from January 2022, I believe. But actually, later on in this, the statement, they clearly indicate that the subject letters before us are those from August. So I just want to make it clear again here to avoid confusing the rule, that August letters are the one that you are looking at, because that, when you look at the January letters, they start with, because the court ruled such and such, that was sent from DOB to the applicant and to that, to the owner, and it was starting with the, the court ruled such and such, therefore, we revoke. I believe the applicant was trying to give an impression to the board that the reason for the revocation was an, like, a fictitious court decision by, by, by a certain court, and DOB relied on that. From, from the DOB submission, and even from the statement of appeal itself, when you read through it, it's crystal clear that the reason for the revocation was the fact that this subject lot and the adjacent side, si- signs are immediately adjacent to the thruway. I just wanted to make these issues clear, to, like, to avoid any further door opening for rediscovery. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe the reason for that, um, there was a miss, uh, there was just an administration, administrative procedural thing that, for which the revocation had to be filed again. It didn't go to the correct address or something like that. But that's-
They were not served properly.
They were not served properly.
But when you read through the statement of appeal from the applicant, he says that he's trying to imply that the reason DOB revoked was a court decision from that DOB submission. That's, that's not there.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I agree with the board, and I agree with DOB's determination. And I think it's been made very clear where we stand, it sounds collectively, on the measurement, uh, or the, where the e- eastern boundary is for the thruway, and that the measurement of the signs to that eastern boundary is- And that the measurement of the signs to that eastern boundary is within two hundred feet. I have nothing further to add.
Thank you.
Chair, yeah, one more point. Can I speak?
Very quickly.
Yeah, it's been a minute. This is Commissioner Sheta again. The issue of the landscape, whether the landscape part is part of the thruway or not, again, it's irrelevant here. And whether it is or is not, it's not gonna make a difference in our determination, my determination on this. So whether the landscape is part or not is irrelevant for me. Thank you.
Madam Chair, our General Counsel has his hand up.
Yes.
Hi Board, I just wanted to make clear for the record. As the Board is discussing the location of the eastern boundary of the thruway. Just for the record, DOB has submitted Operations Policy and Procedure Notice ten of ninety-nine, which was issued December thirtieth of nineteen ninety-nine. Which states in part, "Distances to be measured horizontally from the nearest street line of the arterial highway or boundary line of the public park to the nearest point on the sign or structure." Street line is a defined term under zoning resolution twelve-ten, which states a street line is a lot line separating a street from other land. Street is also a defined word under twelve-ten of the zoning resolution. A street is a way established on the city map. Just connecting that the Board's interpretation of those ways established on the city map with respect to the thruway. Do indicate the boundaries of a lot line at a street line to calculate that distance, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Matthias, please turn on your microphone.
I'm sorry. Trying to get into a habit of turning it off, so nobody hears anything. The final first, we're returning back to the original calendar, so. The first item up is an adjournment, twenty-twenty-one fourteen BZ, twenty-ten Victory Boulevard, Staten Island.
I just want to put a note that this would be the third and the last adjournment for this. I think this is the third adjournment.
Yeah, they are waiting for DOT comments.
Oh, so it is the DOT comments.
Yeah, DOT.
Okay. So we should give enough time for DOT comments to be factored in.
Item number two twenty.
I'm sorry, Ms. Banky has her hand up.
I'm sorry, am I incorrect, Ms. Banky?
DOT did issue comments on May ninth and we await a response from the applicant.
Okay, sorry, I stand corrected, okay. Thank you, Ms. Banky. Item number two twenty-one fifty BZ, fifty Lawrence Avenue, Brooklyn. Okay, and I'm not so sure. Item post-remits, item number three twenty-two thirty-nine BZ, N ninety-three-ten BZ, one eighty-eight, one ninety-eight, Varick Street, Brooklyn. Deferrals are item number four, twenty-twenty-one eighty-seven BZ, thirty-seven sixteen Union Street, Queens. Withdrawals, item number five, twenty-twenty-two sixteen A six sixty-four Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
And do you also want to include?
Well, we have to make a vote on this to withdraw.
Okay, all right, so motion to withdraw.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application has withdrawn. The next item is twenty-twenty-one fifty-nine BZ. That is on for Tuesday, but he's withdrawing, is item number twenty-three, one sixty-one oh nine Union Turnpike, Queens. Let me just get to the vote sheet, sorry.
And I just want, for the record, the previous one also is a withdraw without prejudice. I just want to make sure.
Okay, so for twenty-twenty-one fifty-nine BZ.
A motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application is withdrawn. Okay. Decision items. Item number six, eighty-four ninety-one BZ, twenty-three forty-four East Chester Road, the Bronx.
Hey, we received the community board vote, which is in favor. The applicant has revised the plans and has also clarified that the attic space will not be used for office space or storage. And will remain compliant with the prior board grant. Any questions, comments from the board? Okay.
And they paid their filing fee.
All right, and yes, so make a motion to approve.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number six, sorry, item number seven, one twenty-nine ninety-seven BZ, one fifty-sixty-five, Rosanna Parkway, Queens.
Okay, the applicant has submitted revised plan indicating the locations of the air pumps and vacuum machines. I'm satisfied with it, any questions, comments from the commissioners? Okay, make a motion to approve.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number eight, one sixty-seven fifty-five BZ, twenty-sixty-five Clintonville Street, Queens.
Okay, applicant has submitted all the photos of the improvements that's been made to the site. And plans have been revised accordingly. I am satisfied with the submission, any questions or comments from the board? All right, so the applicant requested a ten-year term from the date of the grant. The board is okay with that? Okay, board is in agreement, so make a motion to approve for a ten-year term from the date of the grant.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number nine, three twenty-four fourteen BZ, one ninety-eight thirty Jamaica Avenue, Queens.
So while the applicant was asked to provide photos of the work completed, it only had submitted revised plan. And this morning we received a photo showing the removal of the graffiti, the graffiti, right. At the initial hearing, the applicant was asked to provide a lighting note on the plan in case exterior lights were provided in future. And that was not added to the plan. However, our compliance officer visited the site and provided photos, which does show that the bollards have been placed in front of the vehicles parked along Jamaica Avenue. Progress has been made with regards to in-ground planting along one ninety-nine street, along the rear lot line. And the parking spaces have been stripped, so. But I did notice that there are barbed wires, the photo that was submitted, so that needs to be removed. So I'm not going to hold our grant, but I'm going to make that a part of the condition, if that's okay with the board. So any comments or questions from the commissioners before I read out? Okay, so I'm gonna make a recommendation to approve with the following conditions. That only up to five parking spaces for used car sales shall be permitted. And that there shall be no repair work outside the repair building. In-ground planting along the lot line shall be planted and maintained. And a note that was to be added to the plan will be now a part of the condition. Should there be any lighting fixture provided in future, all lighting sources that are located on the lot line adjacent to residential use. Shall be shielded from direct view and pointed down and away from residences to minimize any adverse effect on the surrounding residences. And the site shall be maintained graffiti-free and all barbed wires shall be removed. So with that motion to approve.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number ten, twenty-two, two twenty-two, two zero twenty-two thirty-three A through thirty-five A. Three dash fifteen, three dash seventeen, one twenty-fifth Street, Queens.
Okay, the applicant has submitted revised documents. I want to make sure the commissioner was satisfied with the revision that was provided on vice chair Shabeta, were you satisfied?
I was, they updated their financials, they provided the sample map, aerial images, we're satisfied.
Commissioner Hartley Brown, I know you had questions.
Yeah, I had questions about the discrepancy in the totals presented in the statement versus the financial. Chart, they revised the chart and they took the total out of the statement, so there's no longer an issue. However, they did itemize what was done before the text amendment and what was done after the text amendment. And so we do have figures that we can base the resolution on, so I'm satisfied.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you Chair, yeah, I saw they submitted the still areas, the two thousand and six aerial photos that I asked them to submit. And they went even extra mile and they submitted sample map, so I wanna thank them for that, but I have no further comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Yun.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
So then I make a motion to approve.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number eleven, twenty-twenty-two thirty-six A eight fourteen Richmond Avenue, Staten Island.
Okay. So I want to make a motion to approve, but before I state that, I just want to make sure. The plan set that we are going to send to DOB is the plan set that was stamped on two twenty-two twenty-two-three. That is the plan set the board, I'm proposing that the board consider approving. As the board takes no position regarding the structure proposed to be built on the portion of the street bed. And the reason I'm stating this plan set, this is the plan that was stamped by our agency when it was submitted. Because when the plans were revised, the revision dates to the plans were not. So that's why I'm going back to the stamped date of the board. So with that.
I'll make a brief statement if that's.
Yes, please, please do.
So the Board has the power to grant permits authorizing construction within the bed of a mapped yet unbuilt roadway. Crucial to the Board's inquiry are whether there is a filed funded active capital improvement plan to improve the roadway of budding the applicant's premises. And whether the city has acquired title to the portion of the roadway of budding the premises. Where the answer to those questions is no, the Board has the authority to issue the waiver and permit construction in the bed of a mapped and a but unbuilt street. Here, the city does not own the roadway of budding the premises and there is no funded active capital improvement plan for the roadway. Directly abutting the applicant's premises. Therefore, I find that the findings have been made entitled the applicant to the subject waiver or permanent structure.
Okay, sorry, Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Are we in roll call for this or?
No, I just want to know if you had.
I have no more questions.
You have no more questions, okay. Any other questions or comments from Commissioner Yun or Commissioner Sheta? Okay, so with that, then I make a motion to approve and the plan set that was stamped on two twenty-two twenty-two-three, that's the one.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number twelve, twenty-twenty-eighty-five BZ, one fourteen Kingsland Avenue, Brooklyn.
I believe this is being deferred. Correct, Tracy?
Correct. We are waiting to revise the AS and plans with environmental notes.
Okay.
Let me ask the foreman.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, next case.
Item number thirteen, twenty-twenty-two twenty-six BZ, fourteen eighteen Shore Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Okay, we received the community board recommendations, in this case, community board voted in favor, though nine opposed. We also received plans and statement of findings that's been revised. I have no further comments, I'm satisfied with the submission, board members, everybody seems to be satisfied. Commissioner Yun, you're satisfied? Yeah, okay. So with that, I make a motion to approve with the following condition, that the removal of exterior wall and or joists in excess of those indicated on the BSA approved plan. Shall be void, shall void the special permit.
Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item fourteen, we already discussed, Special Order Calendar Continued Hearing Items, item number fifteen, three thirty-nine oh four BZ. One fifty-seven thirty, Willet's Point Boulevard, Queens.
The initial hearing on the application was held on March twenty-seventh. Excuse me, the applicant's response has been responsive to all the comments that were raised. The board had expressed concerns about the U-Haul rental at the subject site, the applicant has revised the proposed amendment and the statement of fact and the plans. Specifically, the U-Haul rental operation is no longer available at the site, the owner has discontinued the operation and has provided a proof. Of that by submitting a screenshot of the U-Haul website showing that the site is no longer listed. The board had also asked the applicant to modify the site lot condition by providing a continuous fence and more landscaping along the residential lot lines. The applicant states that the extended fence will be, they will extend this fence. Which will further shield the car wash service along with the new landscaping that is being proposed along the rear and the northern lot line. And to address the water runoff from the car wash, the applicant is proposing to enlarge the existing drain into a trench drain to capture the runoff from the car wash and the rain. The owner has agreed to lower the arm of the car wash, my question is, can that be lowered now before we make any further determination? The applicant also has provided an operational plan that provides that the hours of operations and not only of the automotive repair system, the gas pumps, but also of the machines. The board had asked that the hours of operation for the car washing machine, vacuum machine be limited. And I think the proposed hours have been modified accordingly. So the car wash and the vacuum will operate from eight AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday, and eight AM to two PM Sundays. So and the excess banners have been removed, so I really am satisfied with it. Any other questions or comments, Vice Chair Shabeta?
I want to thank the applicant for a very thorough response, they addressed most of the statements that we made. There, I do have just a small question about some drums that I saw in photo three and four. I wonder what the purpose of these drums and whether or not they can be held inside the facility instead of outside. What's in the drums, etcetera? Nothing further from you, though, I am satisfied.
Commissioner Hartley Brown.
I have one question, they made a statement that they're replacing the existing trash enclosure with one that's made of corrugated metal sheeting on all sides with metal doors. And I'm concerned about what that's gonna look like and how there is a chance for it to be. Graffitied and dirtied and bent out of shape and that's not going to look good after a few years. So I don't know why they can't use the traditional suggestion that we've been giving people to make it a concrete block or brick enclosure. With the steel doors.
Right, or even the PVC fence that they're using.
Right, even the PVC fence would be better than corrugated metal, I think.
Yeah, and this particular trash enclosure is located away from the car wash, typically in situations where the trash enclosure is right next to the car wash. Generally, we advise the applicant to provide some material that can withstand the soapy, salty water kind of condition. And in this case, that's not an issue, good point, yes. The applicant should be able, should be able to respond to that question at the public hearing, thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you Chair, I want to thank the applicant for being respectful to his neighbors. And taking this courageous decision by excluding the U-Haul service from the site, that's really good, a step forward. And I do agree with Commissioner Hartley Brown on the, like the construction of the trash enclosure. The person who took the decision regarding the U-Haul shouldn't be building something that like upset the neighbors. So I would like them to like consider that when they construct the trash enclosure, and I have no further comments to add, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yun.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. The next case, please.
Item number sixteen, thirty-one oh nine BZ, one seventeen oh four September Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, so as the board may recall, on February twenty-seventh, the board heard the case. Even though the applicant's counsel had failed to serve the notice of initial filing of the application. Or hearing notice to the community board elected officials and the affected neighbors. Since the applicant's counsel was new to BSA process and requirement, the project manager had reached out to the council and explained the process. The applicant's counsel indicated that he was satisfied with the information provided. However, there was no follow-up submission, including a new notice of filing of initial application or notice of today's hearing. Nor did the council reach out to the project manager for assistance until. nor did the council reach out to the project manager for assistance until our project manager reached out to that council. So this is all very disturbing to me. Instead, the board received a letter asking for a ten-year extension stating that the financial burden is being imposed by the board and is seeking the board to reconsider the existing fence instead of an eight-foot-high chain-link fence of two hundred linear feet. I have asked the project manager to reach out to the council and ask that the owner also be present, uh, at today's hearing. As I'm concerned that the property owner may not be represented properly and perhaps may have been given, uh, improper guidance by its council about the broad board process. The owner must attend today's hearing. There are two parts to the, uh, to an application for an extension of term and one of which is the filing process, including notifying the appropriate entities as part of the rules of the board requires that for all applications, not just for extension of terms. There is no exception the board can make on this matter and it must be met. We are at the second hearing and the applicant has failed to serve the notice to the community board and its elected officials. The other component is the complacency with prior grant. In this regard, as stated in the past hearing, the site is not compliant. In addition to not being in compliance, there are new elements on the site which is further causing non-compliance. So based on these two components, the board can dismiss the case for lack of prosecution for inadequate filing. We do not even have to go to the lack of compliance. It's just the fact, fact that the applicant failed to, um, uh, you know, uh, notice and, uh, proper improper notification that is good enough of a ground. Um, so I just want to state for the council and for the owner, uh, board provides a relief from the underlying zoning regulation to allow and, uh, board provided a relief from the underlying zoning regulations to allow an auto repair facility on this site. The owner has been and is benefiting from the board's grant to use the site as an auto repair facility. And to allow such a relief, the board has consistently required that such uses when abutting residential use are adequately buffered and maintained, including not, uh, not store auto parts in the open area. For the board to consider granting any extension at a minimum, the applicant has to provide the information the board has asked. Thus far, the owner and its council are, uh, are delaying the process and maybe hoping that the board will give in. The board in, um, on historic evidence, um, and I, I think based on the historic, uh, evidence, I am not convinced and I'm extremely concerned about the owner's ability to maintain the site and be compliant with all the, uh, prior grants and any, any conditions that we may impose now. So as I stated earlier, the board can dismiss the case for lack of prosecution and, um, use of the site as an auto repair would result in violation thereby um, of the underlying zoning regulation and would force D O B to issue fines. So I leave it up to the board to decide whether they want to dismiss this application for lack of prosecution. Um, Vice Chair Shabeta?
I, uh, I share your concerns, uh, Chair. The board granted relief here, um, and that relief had a term in which we set certain conditions. And as part of the process, that upon the end of the term, they come back. We review, uh, the community board is aware, there's proper notice to all related parties so that they can review whether or not this relief is a nuisance or if it's still necessary. To claim that that's a hardship is is a non sequitur because the very thing that you're enjoying is due to a grant of ours. Um, I would, before I am prepared to make a, a determination whether or not we should dismiss it, I'd like to, I'm glad that the chair had, uh, requested that the owner, uh, themselves appear so they can be apprised of exactly, um, the severity of this line of prosecution, if, uh, to use the word liberally. Um, nothing further from me.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
So I was on the board when this came around the first time. And the board came out very strongly against the applicant in terms of the way in which the site was being maintained and the effects it had on the neighbors. The board was very firm and very clear that its, um, resolution and the conditions must be complied with. And so across the past ten years or eleven years, it's clear that the owner of this property did not take the board seriously. And so I think that this definitely warrants a serious examination and depending on how the owner and the applicant rep respond today, I definitely think it's appropriate for you to reconsider whether or not they deserve to continue to have the privilege of operating at this site in this neighborhood.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Nishetta?
Thank you, Chair. I, I, since the last hearing and the way the applicant appeared before us last hearing, I was skeptical that they're gonna submit something meaningful to us in, in this submission. And I, I wasn't that wrong. Um, I do believe that we should either make sure hundred percent that the applicant will fix the miserable site that's strongly impacting the neighbors or today close this case and vote on it as soon as possible to dismiss it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I also would like to hear from the owner this afternoon. The site is obviously nestled in a residential community across from a public library. So while, of course, all sites are important, when considering maintenance and operation for illegal non-conforming use, we have any public community facilities and amenities nearby and adjacent and across the street that I think suffer from having a neighbor that doesn't take good care of its site. So I agree with the, my fellow commissioners and I look forward to hearing from the owner today. Thank you.
Just before we go to the next case, um, Mr. Chrysler, please lower your hand. You will have, you're an opportunity to respond during the hearing. Once again, members of the public, this is a review session. There is no public testimony. You will have your opportunity when we have the public hearing.
Thank you.
Item, new cases, item number seventeen, two seventy-five fifteen B Z one fifteen East ninety-seven Street, Manhattan.
Okay, we have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of, uh, I'm sorry, actually, this is an extension of time, so we do not need a proof of, uh, service of initial filing and proof of hearing. This is one of the few cases where the board does not require, uh, initial time because it's an, it's an, it's an extension of time. So this is an application for a four-year extension of time and a waiver of board's rule to complete the construction of a school at the subject site. Um, the time to complete the construction expired on March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Um, I have gone by this side. The structure is totally built out and it's fully enclosed. Um, and the photos that's been provided by the, uh, applicant shows it's, uh, fully ready and, and the applicant states that, um, as of twenty twenty-three August, the school will be partially ready for occupancy except for the theater portion. Um, all the documents has been provided as this applicant always provides very, very thorough and comprehensive information, so I'm very satisfied with it and I would recommend that if there isn't any questions or concerns from the board, I would recommend that we close this application today. Um, okay, um, Vice Chair Shabeta?
I'm satisfied with this application. The applicant represents that the completion is imminent. Based on the evidence and site visits, that statement seems accurate and I support closing and uh, putting this on for, uh, a, a speedy grant.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I have no questions to this case and I'm supportive of closing it.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Nishetta?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with, um, all of you said and yes, I, I do believe that the application was very thorough and, and I have nothing to add. And I'm okay with closing and voting on it as soon as possible.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I'm satisfied and in support of closing. Nothing further.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar continued hearing items. Item number eighteen, twenty twenty-two, three dash three B Z Y forty-nine twenty-three, Second Avenue, Brooklyn.
I'm going to have, uh, Vice Chair Shabeta lead this discussion.
Thank you, Chair. The applicant submitted a revised letter from the developer dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. As explained in the letter, ninety percent of the foundation work was completed by November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Eighty percent of the piles were finished by October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. And according to the general contractor, the foundation will be hundred percent complete within the next forty-five days. I found that the photos and other evidence submitted support this statement and I'm satisfied with this application. I believe I made a, uh, I made a note at the last hearing, but the title of this application should be changed to properly reflect that this is an application. It, uh, is an appeal for a vesting.
Oh, it was not changed? Sorry. Oh, okay. Please note, uh, project manager, that it should be changed. Okay. Um, I too am satisfied with the information, um, that has been provided and we also received a photo that shows the construction fence also has been fixed. That was a question the board had. So I'm satisfied with the submission. Um, Commissioner, um, Hartley Brown?
I'm satisfied with the revision of the percentages of the construction complete as well as, uh, revision of the cost and the percentage of the total cost. I have no additional questions.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Nishetta?
Thank you, Chair. I'm satisfied with the submission. I just want to repeat that all the pros that included structural, uh, nature information slash designs are taken for record and we have reviewed them and I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I am satisfied with this application. I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, just a reminder that, um, when everybody speaks, be clearly and slowly. We can pick you up. Item number nineteen, twenty twenty-two forty-two A Thirty Page Avenue Staten Island. We're still waiting for D O T.
Um, Vice Chair Shabeta, do you want to?
Sure, applicant, sure, thank you, Chair. Applicant submitted a revised statement that includes the text of the G C L thirty-five as per my request and additional details regarding the sidewalk and frontage. They also submitted an updated site plan and a bubble change plan that includes a note regarding board approval, not waiving any required N Y S D E C approval and dimension of the proposed sidewalk on Page Avenue. They updated the, the B P P, uh, that corresponds to the proposed site plan and notes a proposed sidewalk width. Finally, they submitted a firm panel for the site indicating that the site is not in a flood law, in a flood zone. So we're still waiting on D O T. Is that correct, Mrs. Teas?
Yeah, I haven't received a, a letter from D O T.
Okay. Uh, other than that, I'm satisfied with the application pending D O T.
Okay. Um, I'm also satisfied with the submission that's been made. Um, I just want to uh, put a note and this should be in our resolution, um, is that the B S A is not waiving any underlying zoning regulations and, uh, that the builder's payment plan is subject to approval by D O B and D O T prior to work permit is issued for the proposed development. Um, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I have no additional question.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Nishetta?
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I also have nothing further to add.
Okay, new cases, item number twenty, twenty twenty-one eighty-four A sixty-three oh one Amway Road, Staten Island.
Okay, I'm going to have Vice Chair Shabeta lead this.
There's proof of initial filing was provided and proof of hearing notice was provided. The community board voted on three fifteen, twenty twenty-three unanimously to deny. That's twenty-nine in favor, zero against, zero abstentions. There are no opposition letters or letters in support. This applicant submitted the application in twenty twenty-one but had to resign the building, uh, redesign the building after learning there was a storm sewer under the property. The project manager wasn't able to send this application to D E P. or D O T. because there was no street dimensions or water sewer information and unclear property dimensions. On April eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, new plans were submitted that showed the revised proposal. Follow-up comments were submitted upon completion of the review. Those comments are in the file, but addressing those comments at this time may not be necessary as I do not believe this applicant is ready to, to proceed. First, they analyzed the tax lot and not the zoning lot. This in itself is, is quite problematic. Now, we don't have a variance before us. The application is not for variance, but it would, it would need to be because they are asking for a proper, uh, parking waiver. No parking rate waiver is available by statute in this district besides one that can be achieved by an application via seven, seventy-two twenty-one. So the applicant should probably withdraw and refile a project that can be granted. But I want to caution the applicant on seventy-two twenty-one. They should, they should research the D finding because the hardship related to this parking waiver resulted from the owner's own decision in the development of the zoning lot. I have nothing further to, to state on this application. Chair?
Thank you. That was very thorough. I had similar concern, uh, with regards to this application. And specifically, since the site is located within the South Richmond Special District, um, the, the zoning lot, as you mentioned, the applicant only referred to the tax lot and not to the zoning lot. The zoning lot includes eight tax lots and, um, there was a city planning, uh, city planning certification back in two thousand and six, um, and I looked at the, I couldn't download the, the report, but it's N zero three zero zero eight zero R C R, uh, and it had a restrictive declaration. So I would, I remain extremely concerned for us to go any further on this, uh, application. Um, even if it was an entire zoning lot because there is a restricted declaration in place. It was a prior approval from the City Planning Commission and we need to fully understand any development on this side, whether that would be contrary to city planning's grant. And, uh, so, and added to what you have stated, uh, Vice Chair Shabeta, is that should this even be, go far, uh, with regards to seventy-two twenty-one, uh, the D finding becomes an issue because it's a self-created hardship for, um, for subdivision of the, of the tax lot. Um, so I, um, think the applicant should go back to the drawing board and just consider, if at all, um, a G C L waiver without a parking. That would be my recommendation, but it is up to the council to make that determination. Um, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I agree with the chair and the vice chair on this issue. I have no additional comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Nishetta?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, uh, I, during reviewing this application, I've seen that the applicant's saying that we're seeking parking waiver. And I couldn't see in the statement of facts what basis, based on which he's asking for that parking waiver. So I do believe that they need to, like, take another look at the application, probably file it under the, the right, whatever they want to file under. And I, I want to notate that one of the points that the community, that one of the reasons that the community board actually objected to this project was the waiver for the parking. So I, I would like advise the applicant, if they want to just ask for the G C L waiver, I believe it would be like much easier for them to get through. Thank you.
Uh, Executive Director Carl Castanta has a sound.
Yes, uh, Executive Director Castanta?
Yes, I, I just want to clarify for the record again, um, the application before us only sought the G C L thirty-six waiver. Um, no D O B objection has been submitted, um, nor has the application formally uh, requested a variance or gone through that exercise.
That's right. So it would be a whole new process for this applicant to get the D O B objection, should it even pursue a parking waiver.
Well, it would require a, a filing for the variance, which is subject to a different type of application here, which is B Z. Uh, currently, we only have an, an appeals application before us.
Yes, agreed. Thank you.
I, I would say that, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner. I would say let's give him, uh, a chance to, like, comment on what's said uh, the applicant during the public hearing and if he decides to, like, withdraw the parking waiver.
Yeah, uh, thank you, commi, this is, uh, Vice Chair Shabeta. I, I just want the board to, to, to acknowledge that this case has been filed in twenty twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, our, our project manager was, has reached out to this applicant on multiple occasions, tried to work with this applicant. I think that's an important part of the, the, the process that we have to consider when, when giving applicants leeway. Are they actually trying to um, honestly prosecute these applications? Or, 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 because this is a, it's a waste of our resources. We should not be hearing a case that doesn't even have a D O B objection uh, after two years after filing, when they already have had these notices sent. We shouldn't be hearing a case that D O T, uh, we couldn't send the information to D O T because the applicant hasn't provide plans with, with dimensions in it. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, no, thank you, Vice Chair. That was helpful. Uh, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I have nothing further to add. Um, I do agree with the chair and the vice chair's comments.
Thank you. I, I think I would prefer to administratively adjourn it, but I, if the applicant is going to be here, maybe the applicant can stay, but I
maybe the applicant can stay, but I really, I agree with you. I don't want to spend too much of our time deliberating and reviewing this case. Okay.
Next item is item number twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, sixty-eight, thirty-five, Herkimer Place, Brooklyn.
Vice Chair Shabata, you take the lead, please.
Proof of initial filing and proof of hearing notice was provided. The community board has met at the land use committee level, and was waiting for additional information before going to the full board. I'm not a hundred percent sure what the status of that is currently. No opposition letters. This is a common law vesting application to complete the construction of a development of a hotel. Applicant contends that the initial permit was issued on April sixth, twenty fifteen, and the Department of Buildings conducted an audit. Based on that audit, department confirms that the permits associated with the building application were lawfully issued. DOB did note that there are a number of violations on the site. Naturally, the applicant would have to address those violations. Applicant states violations are the result of a prior developer and will be cured. Just want the applicant to review the DOB letter to ensure all of the violations will be addressed. Applicant contends that as of December twenty twenty-two twenty-one, the building was thirty-six percent completed. That includes a hundred percent of the interior demolition and site clearance was complete, a hundred percent of the exit. Always, always a word. There we are. Thank you. It's Monday. Of the excavation was completed, a hundred percent of the steel beam and column installation was complete, a hundred percent of the concrete flooring, metal decking was complete, a hundred percent of the masonry wall erection was complete, and a hundred percent of the underpainting was complete. And they also once, they also state that they spent approximately eight million dollars in developing the property out of the project, a total of over eleven million dollars. So seventy-two percent of the anticipated project cost was completed, and they submitted that, they supported that with the general contractor affidavit in a full list was made available. They also supported this with inspection reports and photographs that further substantiate that the progress of this project. I will note that the photographs are approximately a month after December twentieth date, but this is not a close call. This project was, it is clear that a great deal of work was completed on the project. The applicant further offers sufficient evidence of hard cost expenditures of over three million eight hundred thousand and soft costs of over four million dollars. The applicant makes a brief statement with regard to serious loss, but I find the statement of converting this structure into an office space would require virtually demolishing the complete building. I find that compelling. In common law vesting, the board has historically granted application when it was found that there was a substantial construction, substantial expenditure, and the lack of a grant will result in substantial economic loss. I believe the findings here are met. I have nothing further, Chair.
Thank you. I agree with you, Vice Chair Shabata. The applicant's document is very thorough. The affidavit that's been provided by Herkimer Garden LLC officer provided all the detailed construction timeline and the expenditure. And as you stated, the applicant has met the three prongs of the Patnam Armong component. And I did find that the serious loss argument very helpful, and I have no further comments. I'm satisfied. Commissioner Oakley Brown.
So I actually have a different interpretation of what I've read here. This is actually a conversion of a manufacturing building to a three-story hotel. It's not a ground-up new construction. And so the building that's in existence is the building that was in existence minus interior demolition. So the structure was standing before the fact. And because of that, I actually have some questions as to the composition of the substantial costs that were expended or incurred. So this building originally sold in two thousand and seven. And yet there, and that was while there was still a viable manufacturing building on the premises. And what they're doing is they're including that land and holding course site purchase in their costs expended, and I'm not sure that that is appropriate to do because it was money spent on a pre-hotel structure that actually was still in existence as a manufacturing building. And it was also cost expended prior to the hotel permit actually being filed for and received in two thousand and twenty-one. So I think they should address that, and that's a significant amount of money. It's two point three million dollars. That's the land and holding costs consisting of the purchasing and probably the operational cost for that manufacturing building. That's not necessarily costs expended towards the permit for the hotel. So they should address that issue. And as for the serious loss, being that this building, the structure stays in place, and it's the interior partitioning that actually was demolished and will be rebuilt. They haven't necessarily proven that there would be a serious loss if they had to convert this to an as-of-right office. I'm not saying that they can't meet that finding, but I think what they would need to do is actually quantify the serious loss statement with actual numbers. And they don't do that. It's mostly a narrative statement. And so I would like to see how much it would actually cost to convert this structure, which is really at this point just an exterior structure with floors, to an office building.
So I just want to add to that, yes, it is a conversion of an existing three-story building. The question remains is that was the structure in need of that work regardless of whether it stayed as a manufacturing use, or if it was going to be converted for any other use for that matter? And that's the clarification that you're seeking.
Right.
It could have been an existing manufacturing office or even hotel. Would that work would have been required? That's the question. But even if it were a hotel use, that work would have been required, right?
Right. No, what I want them to do is basically back up their statement with money, with how much money it actually would cost to do it, because right now it's just a conclusory statement, which if it were a ground-up construction project on vacant land, would be much more convincing. But because the actual, the structure of the building is still there, and most of the argument has to do with partitioning, which isn't that fundamental to the structural stability necessarily. It's not that that, it doesn't have that much of a major impact to the existing manufacturing structure. They should detail it with how much money it would cost for redesign, how much of what was already built can't be reused because, well, the manufacturing building is still going to stay, basically. So they should talk about whether there's bracing that's going to be required that's different from the bracing that's required for the hotel, those kinds of things. I think they need to finesse their argument a little more.
Uh, this is Vice Chair Shabata. So let's, would it be fair to say to, that they should for the, to show expenditure, show all the money that they spent in pursuit, in line as a result of the permit and in line to move forward on the permit? Then with regard to serious loss, show how all that money spent cannot be translated into another project that is as-of-right.
Right, yeah. So they just need to give us more fine details because of the existing structure being reused.
Right. I think, though, when this structure was undergoing change, this was before the text amendment, so hotel was also permitted as a right use at that time in manufacturing district. And we know one of the biggest distinction between any manufacturing office and hotel is the amount of plumbing line that one has to put together for each one of the rooms that we put in.
That's what they have to talk about.
Right. I think that's going to be the critical one. And I do believe I did notice that they did get the plumbing permit very early on in the process. So I think that's.
Yeah, I'm not saying they can't make the finding, but they just got to give us more details and putting numbers to the story will help.
I agree with you. Commissioner, I believe that they certainly, I believe that this application will likely meet the findings, that they just need to flush out that material. That's a very good observation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Oakley Brown. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I believe they indicated in their statement of facts that they needed to do structural alteration for the existing building because the existing building back then was a wood-framed structure, and they needed to convert to masonry and steel structure slash concrete. And they spoke a little bit, but probably they were brief more than they should have been on some underpinning work, some foundation work. And I did look at some inspection reports that they attached or submitted in their application that an engineer inspected underpinning slash foundation work. And all these reports were from two thousand and nineteen. I do believe structural loadings for a hotel building is different from a a manufacturing building, especially if the building was okay with being a wood-framed structure. That means that impacting loads back then were like very light or maybe relatively light, I would say. Moving forward to alter this building and make it concrete slash steel with underpinning and new foundation, that gives me an indication that the hotel use require them to do some sort of significant structural alteration to the existing building. That being said, I would think of it like that. If, let's say, if when the text amendment was adapted, if they decided to revert back to the existing commercial and by that they did significant foundation, did it even foundation work and underpinning, and they did some framing work. I would say it would constitute a loss to them to go back to a manufacturing use. They need probably to rephrase this kind of argument in their statement. I don't think it's a big job for them. Other than that, I didn't have actually any comment except for like three. Housekeeping on page two of their statement, on page four, I'm sorry, second paragraph. I believe there is a table that they talk about December second, two thousand and eighteen. As an effective date, it should be December twenty, not December second. And then most of the inspection reports, like I said, are coming from two thousand and nineteen, May two thousand and nineteen, and they are relevant to underpinning and foundation work. While the structural, superstructure photos, they are, most of them, they are dated twenty twenty-two. So if they have some photos from like before the text amendment or around the text amendment time for the superstructure, I believe this would be very helpful. I'm not saying they are necessary for me to like be satisfied with this case, but if they can provide such, I believe that would be helpful. Other than that, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I want to note that when you go to the site, which is a very, it's a narrow street off of Atlantic Avenue. It doesn't appear like anything's happened at the site for some time. So I'd like, and I apologize if I missed it in the file, but some reference to the timeline to complete construction should the common law vested rights be granted. There's a significant amount of graffiti. There are cars parked on the sidewalk in front. The construction sign and fencing looks like it hasn't been maintained in some time. So from the outside, of course, because it's an interior renovation, it looks like nothing has happened. That doesn't mean, obviously, the photographs show proof that a lot of work has happened on the interior. And some of the conversion from wood to steel and concrete, I imagine, is also not just for structure, but also due to life safety of any of the uses that would be proposed here, but namely hotel. But just, I'd like the applicant to talk about what's happening at the site currently and how they can address improving the site in its current state. I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah, no questions. Okay, this concludes the review session for, let's make sure, sorry. Review session for May twenty-second, we will commence with the public hearing. Do you want to?
Let's just give a five-minute break. Five-minute break for everybody who is online to kind of regroup, collect themselves so that they can prepare for our discussion and the first item that we are going to discuss is the signed case, which is the part. So the procedure will be who will speak first? It will be the.
The applicant will speak first, then we will have testimony from Department of Buildings.
Right.
And then there's questions, and then when you're ready, you will open it up to the public and elected officials.
And first, it will be the elected officials, the representative of.
The community board.
Community board.
And the attorney.
Right, and then
Members of.
Members of the public, yeah. That would be the order. So it is eleven twenty-six on my computer calendar. So let's give ourselves just five minutes to regroup, and then we will be back.
Okay.
Ladies.
Carlo.
We can hear you now.
Oh, now you can hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's what it was. Okay. Okay.
We are having some technical
Sorry. Good morning. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. We will commence with new cases, appeals calendar, new cases. Item number fourteen, two thousand twenty-two sixty-nine A to two thousand twenty-two seventy-five A, two thousand and one BARTO Avenue. Thank you, Jella. The applicants please present. Let's see, where are my waiting room people? I can't see. Um. I see David Karnofsky. I see David Schnackenberg. You see David Schnackenberg? He was there before. I can't see mine. I, I I don't see David. David hands in the room. Why is my screen not showing up? Great.
I'm, I'm here. Thank you.
Ah, Mr. Schnackenberg. Is your hearing with you, Mr. Schnackenberg?
Um, David Karnofsky will be
Mr. Karnofsky, can you join us, please?
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can. Anyone else, David?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnackenberg. Thank you, Mr. Karnofsky. Um, you want to state your name for the, you don't have to be sworn in as this is an appeals case. Do you want to, um, state your names for the record and please present?
Yes, I'm David Karnofsky, Free Frank Harris, Swire and Jacobson. Together with David Schnackenberg, the same firm.
Mr. Schnackenberg?
Uh, David, David Schnackenberg with, with Free Frank, uh, here with Mr. Karnofsky. And, um, we, we appreciate your comments this morning. I'm gonna turn to David and I think then I'll, I'll do a lot of talking after that.
Good morning, uh, Chair Shonda and Commissioners. As the chair said, we are here on an appeal from the DOB's revocation of permits. Signs that cite on the basis that they're visible from the New England throughway and within two hundred feet of that arterial highway. I'm going to make just a very
Karnofsky, can I interrupt you? You're in and out. So can you check your audio, please?
Okay.
Sorry, interrupter.
Speaking closer to the mic might help.
Okay, how is this?
Yep.
Better? All right, I'll, I'll lean right in. I'm going to be very, very brief and essentially turn it over to David for the bulk of the, uh, discussion. While we, while the only question before the board today is with respect to the distance from the arterial highway, we believe that the prior proceedings are relevant to this appeal because both the Department of Buildings and the Department of City Planning have stated on a number of occasions that the area occupied by the signs is significantly further than two hundred feet from the New England throughway. The distances cited by the agencies in the past only make sense if the boundary of the New England throughway is not at Baychester Avenue. As you'll hear more today from David, we do not accept that the nineteen forty-seven and nineteen forty-eight mapping actions established the boundary of the New England way at our lot line. As shown on the current alteration map, in fact, the New England throughway is a roadway distinct from Baychester Avenue, such that the appropriate measurement of the two hundred foot distance could be taken from the edge of the arterial itself. One more point before I turn this over to David. In support of its position, the DOB relies heavily on the views of the Department of City Planning, which it describes in its papers as the agency responsible for interpreting the city map. The city charter says something quite different, which is that the city planning is the custodian of the city map. Indeed, the city law department stated before the court in one of the proceedings prior that when considering this type of issue, city planning is the custodian of the map, the Board of Standards and Appeals will actually interpret the map. We therefore don't believe, as DOB appears to suggest, that the views expressed by city planning are entitled to a special deference. We ask you to keep an open mind, including allowing us an opportunity to respond to comments made earlier this morning, both today and through a follow-up submission, and I'll now turn it over to David.
Thank you. Thanks, David. Um, can everybody hear me okay?
Um, yes.
Okay. So, good morning. Um, thank you. We appreciate, uh, you know, this, this matter is clearly, uh, one that everyone's studied very closely. Uh, many of you have been familiar with this one for about a decade. And, uh, for the pivot a little bit, to be, to be quite honest, after hearing the board's comments this morning, um, the very lengthy presentation that I prepared uh, is probably not the, the, the best course. So if it's, uh, okay with you, uh, Commissioner Shonda, what I'd like to do is briefly respond to some of the comments that were made, uh, during the review session and then go through, um, just a bit of our presentation to talk about, um, how we interpret the, the map and resolution on which DOB, DOB bases its argument that Baychester was de-mapped. Um, I'd like to, then obviously we'll hope to respond to DOB's comments and to the community. So i- if that's okay. I'll just, I'll just get to it. So we respectfully disagree that the previous assertions made by DOB and city planning are not relevant to this proceeding. Um, we think that, you know, in, in, in what are now called BARTO one and BARTO two, um, it was very clear, right, that the, the, the issue was whether the twenty-seven individual signs on each side of the monopole were a single sign, right? That was the, the main issue, but um, implicit in that analysis was that all of the panels were smaller than three hundred and twenty-two feet, which was the, the agreed upon size from the arterial. Um, now, of course, the board did not explicitly state what the, um, or did not, did not rule and, and, and really consider or measure itself the distance, but, but that was really part of the, the, the decision. Um, and it was certainly part of the submissions from, from DOB and from some planning, both at the board and, and in court. Um, I'm not going to belabor the point by running down all of them. I won't waste your time and I don't, don't mean to. Um, other points, uh, that, that came up, and this came up in a number of, of your comments. Um, the, the monument map that DOB submitted, and this is something we'd like to brief the board more fully on. Um, I had to get a little bit educated on monument maps after reading DOB's submission. Um, you know, the monument map was created in, I think it was nineteen sixty-two. I'm, I'm I'll pull up my notes, but, you know, the monument map was drawn once before the New England throughway was constructed. It was sort of the space was there. Everyone knew it was coming, but it wasn't built. And it has been adopted, it has been updated rather, uh, a number of times since, but when it's updated, they don't redraw the boundaries of the, of the map, the way they do for an alteration map, which of course is an adopted map of the city. The monument map is the same sort of baseline, and then they updated, it was yeah, it was, it was nineteen fifty-two, I think, that this monument map was first drafted. And then the, um, individual monuments are sort of located on the map and it shows where the monument exists and what, what it's, uh, what the data is for it. It's really a surveyor's map. And so the, the streets have not been updated on the monuments map, only the monuments. And so, as we'll, we'll get back to the board more fully, but we don't believe that the monument map is at all dispositive um, in this matter. And so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, Commissioner Shonda mentioned, um, zero thirty-two sixty-seven in question, its applicability. Uh, we request that we brief the board more fully on that in our next submission. Um, nobody wants to hear me. Try to do that on the fly. Um, and then Commissioner Shabeta, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Shabeta. Um, your, your, your comments, uh, I, I know, uh, resonated with, with the chair as well, but, um, one comment that you made was that the board's whereas clauses were, were sort of mere dicta. And, you know, respectfully, my understanding, uh, in, in reading and, and at times drafting opinions for the board is that the whereas clauses, obviously the resolution is the resolution, it's the last paragraph, it's what is being waived, modified or granted by the board, but um, the whereas clauses have traditionally, in my understanding, have a really significant presidential value. They're the way that we rely on board precedent for anything. And so we, uh, respectfully submit that they do have presidential value. They are not sort of mere dicta the way an aside by a court is. Um, and we can, of course, be more fully on that as well. Um, Commissioner Ali Brown, a- again, I noted that your comments, um, I think relied in, in large part on the, the Bronx Monument map. And so we'd like to, we'd like to offer a, a brief on sort of on, on the monument map. Um, Commissioner Shaba as well, um, just a, just a few points. Um, again, we respectfully disagree that the, the previous assertions in the previous cases are irrelevant. But that's fine. I did want to clarify, um, I did not mean to imply that the January notice of revocation was sent, um, sort of in response to the court. What I simply meant to apply, and forgive me if my papers weren't clear, was that the January revocation notice was sent once the, uh, Judge Rackhour's decision was overturned on procedural grounds. Um, so our position is that the substance of Judge Rackhour's uh, holding is still pretty valid, and, and that was all I was trying to say. Um, but as, uh, the, as the chair noted, the January revocation notice and the August revocation notice are one and the same. They weren't properly served in January, and so DOB reserved them in August. But it's the same grapple and, and we don't take any issue on that.
So Vice Chair Shabeta here. Counsel, are, are you suggesting that the board has previously decided and held, uh, the distance of this sign?
I am. I'm, I'm saying that, that the board and more, more significantly, DOB and city planning have all ruled that the sign is located, uh, in excess of two hundred feet from the arterial, that that's implicit in all of the decisions. Uh, I am not saying that the board has used the language, we hold the sign to be X feet from the arterial. Um, but I do think that it is im- implicit in all the board's finding. Um, and more significantly, I do think that there are very specific statements by DOB and city planning both before this board and in Supreme Court that, uh, explicitly state the distance and that those are relevant. Um.
So, all right, just to follow up, so are you also saying that the board, the question of the sign's distance uh, was an issue that the board has, uh, had previously, um, this, previously, uh, addressed and decided on?
Yes, while it was not explicitly the subject of the previous appeals, it was implicit in the decisions in those appeals. That is our position.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, our General Counsel Chase Vine has his hand up.
Hi, I, I just want to make clear, um, in response to Mr. Schnackenberg's comments, uh, the board has not made any determination, uh, at BSA with respect to the distance, uh, of the sign from an arterial highway at this location. Uh, that has not been the subject of an appeal before the board. Uh, if it has been, uh, the applicant should not be here.
No, and, 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 and thank you, uh,
The appellant, my apologies.
Thank you, counsel. I, uh, I understand, I, while I may disagree with the applicant's, uh, position, I just want to clarify what it was so that, uh, when we do, uh, create a resolution, we can specifically say how we disagree with that application.
And, and again, I, I, and I respect and understand the board's position, and I, and I am not saying that there was an appeal made on the signage, but we, we would note, for instance, that there were objections, uh, issued by DOB that related to distance from the arterial. Those objections were cleared in the first BARTO, uh, and BARTO one's application. Um, that the BSA's own, um, notice of objections, uh, sought clarification on the distance of the signs from the arterial and that information was provided to, uh, the BSA. Um, which of course is a staff level sort of gating issue and not one that was, was adjudicated by the commissioners and I would never imply otherwise, but the decisions do, um, do hold that finding. Um, and, and again, as, as we've said repeatedly, it's more significant that this was, uh, DOB and city planning's position. But, uh, again, I, I did promise that I wouldn't belabor the point and I'm gonna try really hard not to. Um.
I, I just want to make one, um, di- di- discussion. You talked about the monument map and alteration map. Yes, there are different types of maps that the, uh, Bureau of, uh, Topography Unit at the Borough President's Office that maintains. And the submission that the DOB provided includes both monument maps and alteration map. As a matter of fact, the nineteen forty-eight map the DOB was referring to is actually, I believe, is an alteration map. And it referred to, it referred to the monument maps because it provides the dimensions of the blocks and lots near, next to these arterial highways. So it was really kind of using these two elements to kind of piece the, uh, the proximity of the subject lot to the arterial highway. And that's how I kind of piece the two elements together. So, and the arterial, um, the alteration map is, so, uh, you know, I think both are updated at the same time. I can't say whe- whether they're done simultaneously, though that's not before us. But, but bottom line is both of them were used in its review, both by DOB and city planning. So I just want the record to be very clear on that. It wasn't just referencing monument map. It was alteration map leading to the monument map and thereby combination. So if my statement was a little unclear about because I refer to the monument map, it is basically, I was talking about this alteration map of the nineteen forty-eight with the board of estimate approved. And then the monument map, it shows clearly the meets and bounds of the abutting properties along the, all the arterial highways and the road system.
Uh, un- understood, Madam Chair, and I, I didn't mean to put words in your mouth. I was just saying, we'd like to, um, you know, DO, DOB's submission rested in large part on those two maps, the nineteen forty-eight alteration map, which is an adopted map of the city and the monuments map. And we will address this in our response to DOB, um, in our next submission, um, in our first submission. But, um, we wanted to sort of take those two aside, and our, our position is that the monument map, um, is uh, is, is really not as relevant as the nineteen forty-eight alteration map. And, um, with, with your permission, I'm going to go through some of the things that we think are relevant in the nineteen forty-eight, uh, in the nineteen
I would though say, when I did look at the monument map and the maps that you had, uh, your, your submission had. the dimensions of the property of of your of of the property in question, and what was in the monument back was exactly the same. So there really was not much of a difference in terms of the analysis. It was really trying to put one next to another. So I really don't think you need to spend that much time on what the importance of the monument map is, other than the fact that the meets and bounds of your property of of the of the block of, what is the block number five?
Fifty-one forty-one.
Fifty-one forty-one was very clearly demarcated back then, as it is in your survey and your submission also. First, I want to go to Commissioner Sheta and then Vice Chair Shabeta. Sorry, Mr. Schnackenberg, did you have anything to say? I I cut you short. Sorry.
I'm happy to be cut short. I will have something to say later. Thank you.
Okay, all right. First, let me go to Commissioner Sheta, then Vice Chair Shabeta.
Thank you, Chair. This is Commissioner Sheta. Mr. Schnackenberg, on page ten of your statement under the the, like, it's two-line sentence, and it clearly indicates that the subject provocations, which were dated August twenty-four, I believe, are the subject of this appeal. So course, are of the table on this discussion. That clear?
A hundred percent, and I didn't mean to imply that.
Good. The second point I want to touch on is I got an impression from your latest response to D O B that you're looking at the boundary of the New England thruway as the boundary of the roadway.
Yes, sir.
So I got it right?
You did.
Okay, can you please take a look at your statement of appeals on page eleven? There is a map there, figure five. Do you see that map on figure five?
I am. I'm getting there.
I'll put it on the screen. You see that map?
Yes.
Okay, I will zoom in to what is zoomed in to. Do you read that? New England thruway, right?
Yes, sir.
And then there are two parentheses that says what?
I believe it says two hundred and fifty.
In in mass, this this sign means greater than two hundred fifty feet. And it refers, on your own submission, it refers to the New England thruway as it's wider than two hundred fifty feet, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. Let me share another another.
But but we would say that, and we do say that
Let me, let me, let me just, I I I'll share my screen and
Forgive me, I won't speak yet.
This is, this is an aerial photo, not from Google, but from a website that enables distance measuring. And it is clear that the roadways are less than hundred feet wide. While the map you submitted to us clearly indicates, and you just agreed to that, clearly indicates that the New England thruway is wider than two hundred feet. Google map show the roadways to be less than hundred. That undermines your argument that the distance should be measured from the roadways. According, if you simply compare what's on your page eleven, figure five map and the content of this picture here, which you can probably see in Google, if if
Yes, sir. No, I I I hear what you're saying.
You, it's same exact thing, one hundred foot, the roadways are one hundred feet wide. That clearly, it makes it clear cut that the thruway, New England thruway, should include something to the right, something to the left, or maybe both. It's wider than a hundred feet. It's not the roadway.
Commissioner Sheta, I I hear what you're saying, and our our response is that the New England thruway does own a swath of two hundred and fifty feet, including the grassy areas on either side of the roadway. The fact that it owns those grassy areas does not make those areas part of the arterial, and that's consistent with board precedent. And that's something that we can brief you further on in our papers. But you're absolutely correct that the map does show a width of greater than two hundred and fifty feet. But that is the that is the space that is owned by the New England thruway. It is not the roadway itself.
It doesn't say two hundred fifty.
I I need
No, I'm so sorry.
I listened to General Counsel, yes.
I just like to reiterate that this is an appeal challenging D O B's interpretation of provisions regarding measuring distance from a advertising sign to an arterial highway. Again, referencing Department of Buildings O P P N ten of ninety-nine, which D O B has submitted, which it does form a part of the basis of their interpretation, refers to measuring to a street line. Street line is a defined term in zoning under twelve-ten. I believe Commissioner Sheta is referring to the fact that street line does not refer to the physical built roadway, but the actual boundaries of the lot line of a mapped way. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, counsel. Yes, that's what I meant exactly. Thank you.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Oh, yeah, I I think that this would, at this point, counsel, you've heard our review and and you see the parts where we disagree with. And, you know, if with regard to the comment of whether or not the board has decided this height, this distance issue. In the past, we, as you know, we record and transcribe all of these hearings. You're free to show evidence of any evidence of deliberation on the on, and or if ever this was questioned before the board. I'd be interested in seeing that.
But but I think to your point, we're going to try and convince you now that the the map wasn't wasn't de-mapped. So I will, I'll save that for my written submission, Vice Chair Shabeta, as I think you're suggesting.
And this, and sorry, just going, this is General Counsel, but just going to Commissioner Vice Chair Shabeta's point. To the extent that the board has made any sort of fact-finding in Barto one or two regarding the distance, the effect of or the import of the current interpretation by D O B to those appeals would be helpful.
Understood.
Is there anything further, counsel? Or you want to rest on submission?
I do not want to rest on submission, if you'll allow me, just to go through. We'd like to discuss a little bit of the the nineteen forty-eight map, which we think is the crux of D O B's argument. If you'll permit me a little bit more time. Am I able to share my screen? Is that something that we can do?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we can do it on your end. Let's see if I screw it up. So I can just go to share screen. I'm sorry. It is my hope that you're looking at an aerial of the site. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I, you know, I spent some time removing slides from this presentation, and I'm not going to go through all of them. So obviously, this is this is our site. Obviously, it's in the C seven district. As much as I enjoy talking New York City history, you don't need to get into the history of the C seven or why it's there, but it is there.
Mr. Schnackenberg, to before you or when you display each slide, please, for the record, just identify what you are showing. Thank you.
Surely. So the first slide I showed was an aerial taken from Google Maps. The second is an image of the New York City zoning map. We will submit this presentation to the board after the fact. This is another image taken from from Google Maps. I thought it would be useful for table-setting purposes, just to identify the signs that we're talking about. I'll do it briefly. Obviously, there is disagreement as to the boundary of the New England thruway. We do maintain that it is that it is here. The signs we're talking about, there are there are seven signs that were the subject of the revocation, right? There were two of the three signs that are located on this tripole have been revoked. Notice that only one of those three panels is up. That's because there's a stop work order. We have not been able to do the work to repair and replace the other two signs that were damaged in a storm. Four of the seven revoked permits were never actually built, right? There are two tri-panel assemblies that are approved or that were approved to go on this monopole structure, but they have never been constructed. The lollipop sign is on the eastern southeastern corner of the site. That's a pretty standard one face, one sign faces one way, one sign faces the other, and that's the seventh sign. And I just thought it would be useful to to have that understanding. Clearly, there's disagreement as to the distance. We submit that the tripole sign is located two hundred and seventy-nine feet from the thruway, that the tower signs are located three hundred and sixty-three feet, and that the lollipop sign is located four hundred and fifteen feet. And now I'd like to get into, and this is, you know, as D O B put in their submission, the the nineteen forty-eight map and resolution, right? This is the text of the nineteen forty-eight resolution. It is an excerpt. It is not the entire text. But the two things that I want to highlight are that the the resolution in this map do two things, right? They establish the roadway and the widths of the New England thruway. That's stated in the resolution, and it's stated on the map. They also modify and establish the lines and grades of the street system around the New England thruway. That's the second thing that this map and resolution do. There's no mention of a de-mapping in the resolution, nor is there any indication on the city map that Baychester has been de-mapped. And so we think it's very significant. D O B has said that the map de-maps Baychester, and we submit to you that that is not the case. This is a high image, a high-resolution image of the nineteen forty-eight map. It is the same as D O B submitted. We can, we can submit it to you, and what we will submit, I believe it's already in the record. A little bit of context, right? This is the first alteration map that was created after the New England thruway was constructed. So that's consistent with the purpose of the resolution on the map. What are we doing? We're establishing the width of the thruway, and we are establishing the alignment of the streets that were adjacent to the thruway, that at the time the thru the thruway was contemplated in the nineteen forties and fifties, it wasn't clear how wide it was going to be, what its boundaries were going to be, what property was going to be taken for it. And so, yikes. I hope you can see me. I have lost, I have lost the screen, so I apologize.
We can see you.
Oh, good. Well, then, you know, I'm I'm happy to go blind. I I spent some time reading this stuff before. So there you go. That's our oh, boy. So this is our, this is our map. And now there are a couple of points in the map that we want to discuss, right? This is the area of the map that where Baychester is located. We'll get into that later. And then this is the title block of the map. And the title block, we think, is really relevant. It is consistent with the resolution, right? So it says, this is a map. What is the map doing? It's establishing. It's establishing first the lines and grades of the New England thruway. It does so, and it does two things. It's also establishing the changes of the lines and grades of the street system around the thruway. And it's a pretty confusing map to me, and I'm not a map expert. You all are map experts. But it seems to me that those are the two things that are shown on this map. We have here in a red circle, this is the New England thruway. It has been laid out on the map, as it says in the resolution. And elsewhere on the map, also in a red, are the regrading and realignment of the streets. If you continue reading in the resolution, what we see is just that language. The map is primarily provides for establishing the lines and grades of the New England thruway, but provision is also made for modifications in the street system. And that didn't just happen with respect to Baychester. There are other points on this exact same map where there is plenty of red ink, and the red ink is clearly not part of the arterial. The red ink is very clearly showing the alignment of the streets surrounding the arterial. And here are two sections of the nineteen forty-eight map, the very same map we're discussing, where the red ink is illustrating a realignment of the streets. And we submit to you that that's what's happening on Baychester. The D O B's contention that the fact that Baychester is marked in red is a de-mapping is just not the case. Here's another location where we see on the very same map in nineteen forty-eight red ink indicating the the realignment of the streets. And right, and this is because there are ways that the city indicates a de-mapping. And the way it does so is by striking the name of the street and by dashing it out. But here on the map, we see that Baychester is not struck out. And we even see that it's handwritten in, and this is on the subject block in in writing. And this is why we think the nineteen forty-eight map in no way de-maps Baychester. And that's really what I wanted to get across for this conversation, right? Because then we move on to the nineteen sixty-six map. This is an image of the nineteen sixty-six map. It is the highest resolution image we can get. This is the current alteration map. And we are very confident that the alteration map shows that Baychester is separate and apart from the New England thruway. So here we are. This is our area of the map. And as we zoom into it, what you see is that here on the right, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but Baychester is not struck out, whereas Freedom Land is struck out. Right? Freedom Land's not there. Baychester is. And we even have a notation on the map that shows the intersection of Aldrich and Baychester Avenue, which is shown on the nineteen sixty-six map. So we believe the nineteen forty-eight map and nineteen sixty-six map are consistent. And to the extent that they're not consistent, we believe the nineteen sixty-six map would supersede anything that was put on the nineteen fifty-eight map. We're also very very confident that the resolution accompanying the forty-eight map and the 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 title block are very explicit. The map does two things. It shows us the thruway, and it realigns the streets, and it doesn't mention de-mapping. We think that's very critical. And so this is what we're left with, and I took out a lot of stuff that you guys have already disagreed with, and I don't want to belabor it. But this is our supposition, right, that there is the New England thruway, that there's a street line for the thruway, that there is a grassy area that is owned by the thruway, but that is not part of the arterial. And then you've got Baychester Avenue and its street line. And when you assemble these items, this is this is what you get. You get this this distance, and these are the distances I referred to earlier. The nearest the nearest line of our property is two hundred and seventy feet from the New England thruway from its border, as as we suggest that it is, such that all of the signs that are located further east are necessarily more than two hundred and seventy feet. And we've provided their distances to you, and we will provide a survey to you. We think this is consistent with the current street map. So this is an image of the street map. This is what Commissioner Sheta showed before. And if you if you toggle the arterial maps on the same website, it it's pretty clear, or we believe that it's clear, and we suggest to you that the arterial is limited to the New England thruway.
So just a question, counsel. If we were to, if there were to be an exit ramp or an entrance ramp at the adjacent to your site, would that, would you consider that part of the arterial?
If there were an exit ramp adjacent, well, I think there's a lot of board precedent that says an an exit ramp and approach is part of the arterial, and indeed, Appendix H lists both the arterial and its approaches. But that is not the same as as a road that's parallel to, I think, D O B called it a service road, but that's not included in Appendix H. That's distinct from, we would submit to you, Vice Vice Chair Shabeta, that that is distinct from an approach. I'm almost done, I promise. So actually, I I am done because I took out all the other slides. So before we we turn to D O B, and and of course, if if any of you have any questions.
I I I I just was, I want to go to Commissioner Artley Brown. I know Commissioner Artley Brown, you want to say first, and then I'll follow up.
Well, yeah, I just want to ask the question about how you reconcile what you see on the nineteen ninety-six monument map that doesn't show the existence of Baychester between Barto and and Aldrich as being an actual street? How would you reconcile that with the analysis that you just gave us of the other dated maps?
Thank you for the question. The monuments map is is and we and I will I will brief this more fully to the board because it's something that I'm I need to be better educated about before I can say to you in total confidence. But my understanding, and we will brief this fully, the monuments map was drafted in nineteen fifty-two. That was before the thruway was constructed. And so there was an area where everyone knew the thruway was coming, and that was what was surveyed, and that is the basis for the monuments map. The nineteen ninety-six monuments map uses that same nineteen fifty-two drawing, but only is updated with the individual monuments. So our suggestion is that that is an outdated aspect of that map. And that's why it's not an adopted map like the alterations map, like the city map. It's merely a monuments map that exists for the purpose of of locating monuments and establishing their grades. We will also likely introduce to you the title map in our next submission that shows, you know, when the when the thruway was being planned out and laid out, they really weren't sure where it was going to go. And so the 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 area that was being contemplated for what property was being taken was much wider than the thruway, as was actually constructed. I don't want to speak out of turn. I do need to learn a little bit more about the monuments map. learn a little bit more about the monuments map, and I will brief you more fully in writing if that's acceptable.
Um, any questions or comments from the commissioners, Commissioner Yun? I see general counsel's hand, hand up. Okay.
And if the, hi, thank you. And if the appellant would also uh address uh either now or in a submission uh in accordance with twelve ten definition of street line, where the lot line would be separating, um, given that the throughway owns the park where the lot line would be located.
I, I, I hear your question, uh, General Counsel, and I appreciate its significance. We will spend some time uh briefing you on that, and we appreciate that. Um, before I uh stop talking, I'm sure you're looking forward to it. I just wanted to uh offer one, one more thing, and that's, um, you know, we received a submission from uh the General Counsel to Co-op City this morning. And um I don't want to, you know, belittle the submission, and I don't mean to, but the signs that are at issue in this appeal definitionally must be, uh, as per DOB, they must be two things, right? Within two hundred feet of the arterial and facing the arterial. So these signs are not illuminating towards Co-op City. Um, if they are illuminating towards Co-op City, I would submit that they are not facing the arterial, and as such, they are improper. Uh, they're, they're not properly the subject of revocation. And so we, we would submit that the uh, the opposition or the um stakeholders input is sort of misplaced, right? There, there are concerns with other signs on the site. We don't have to pretend that that's not a concern. We've all been aware of those signs, but that, that's not what's at issue here. These are a, a very discreet revocation of seven permits. Uh, and the basis of those revocations is that all of these signs face away from Co-op City towards the arterial and are within uh allegedly within two hundred feet. And uh, so that's just our response to that. And with that, I'll, I'll take a break.
Um, thank you. Um, I'm going to reserve my questions till the end. Uh, uh, do we have representatives from Department of Buildings? Yes. I would say let her in, in case she wants to. Uh, Helen Thomas will speak for the Department of Buildings. You're muted, Helen.
Hey, hi, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Tom.
Hi. Um, do I have permission to speak?
Yes, please just state your name again and um, and and um, your position at the Department of Buildings.
Sure. My name is Helen Thomas, and I'm Assistant General Counsel at Department of Buildings. And I'm here today uh representing Department of Buildings on this matter. And um, I'd like to just go into a brief discussion about our position on this issue. Um, and so I just want to discuss it are, it's our position that Baychester Avenue is part of the New England throughway. And that because it's part of the New England throughway, it abuts the appellant's property. So I just want to go into a little detail about the maps that the appellant raised and to clarify our position. Um, i- is, is there a way I can share the screen?
You should see a share.
Yeah, I see it here. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I have here the the, this is the map that I pulled up. This is the map that I, I attached as exhibit as well as this is a
Can, can you identify the name of the map for the record?
Sure. This is the nineteen ninety, nineteen forty seven alteration map. Um, and it is located on under two thousand one Barto Avenue in the Bronx. It could be found on New York City Street Map. Uh, and this is this is the map that we claim, we're, we're, we're saying that establishes the New England throughway. Uh, and on the map, I'll show you, um, so close up. It's part of my s- submission. Um, just going to state the exhibit, uh, Exhibit Three. This is also part of the nineteen forty seven map. This is the, I, I pulled up the map online because you can't really see the detail in the exhibit. Um, but this is the map, I guess, map title. Um, and the map title specifies that it is establishes the line and grades of the New England throughway. So that is the purpose of the map. Um, and then in the expla- explanatory notes, which again, this is from the map that I just showed you, it's just a close up of it because you can't see it. It's just a close up of it. And um, on the bottom here, there's a red dotted line. You can't really see it here, but if you go online and you, and you zoom in, it says hereby established. So it's our position that the red lines that we see on the map. Um, if I go back to the map here, the red lines is hereby establishing the New England throughway. Including the area where the appellant's property is located on Barto. And I also, in my exhibit, submitted a close up of the appellant's property, which is right here. Uh, so it's our position that the nineteen forty seven map established the New England throughway and included Baychester Avenue as the New England throughway. Uh, now also on the map, it has a notation that it was adopted by the Board of Estimates on March eighteenth nineteen forty eights under Resolution Seventy Five A. So when you go and look into the resolution, the resolution says, and I quote, "The map provides primarily for establishing the lines and grades of New England throughway." These involve the realignment of several streets bordering the throughway and the elimination of the streets within the throughway. And it goes on to say that the nineteen forty seven alteration map reestablishes a street system in the area bounded by Baychester Avenue. Um, and now the the plan, the depart- the Department of City Planning reviewed this map. And in a letter that you guys have as exhibit, I'm just wanting to make sure I have it the right exhibit. It's Exhibit Two. They state that per, it's their position that per the Board of Estimates nineteen forty eight resolution and the nineteen forty seven alteration map, Baychester Avenue, which was, is, which is a, a budding appellate site is part of the New England throughway. And it says, and it goes, the, the, the language of the de-mapping was actually taken from this letter. Um, where it says here, the alteration map corresponding to the nineteen forty eight resolution establishes the section of Baychester Avenue bordering Block Fifty One Forty One between Barto Avenue and Aldrich Street was de-mapped. And the New England throughway was mapped to the western border of Fifty One Forty One. And Baychester Avenue was incorporated into a throughway as a service road. So so we submitted the nineteen forty eight and the nineteen this is the nineteen forty eight monument map, which here shows that the New England throughway and Baychester are one street. Um, we also included the nineteen ninety six map, which is located online. If you go to um, the Bronx Monument website. Hold on. Um, you can go under section. Let's see here. I think it's section forty five. Yeah, section forty five. It's here, but why I wanted to bring it up is if you, if you zoom in, it says here amended and corrected.
Um, it's not shown, it's
Okay, sorry. I'm gonna make it, let me, thank you. Hold on. Okay. Okay, can you see that now? Okay, can you guys see the map? Okay, so let me zoom back in. So this is the monument map from section forty five. Um, from nineteen, the nineteen, this is on the Bronx Borough President website under section maps, monument maps. And um, it's under the exhibit that I attached, but I wanted to show you that they have a notation here in the corner. And it says amended and corrected, and it has all these dates, and the last date is September seventeen nineteen ninety six. And it does still, it's the same. It does show that New England throughway and Baychester Avenue is one street. And so so it's our position that Baychester is part of the New England throughway, and since it is abutting the appellate site, that any ma- any sign that would be erected on appellate site would be in violation of zoning thirty two six, six, two. Um, I have nothing further.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Thomas?
I have a question. Um, hi, it's Commissioner Yun. And the chair had asked for DOB to clarify the applicability of Section Thirty Two Sixty Seven, which the appellant said he would um, respond to that in writing, but does DOB have a position on that or prefer to submit in writing?
Um, well, I, I, I took a, I took a look at the area around it. There is a residential area next to um the site, um, that's an R six, but in order to determine whether it's a hundred feet within a hundred feet, or whether it's facing, I would need to look more into the details.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so you're looking at an absolute use uh of the zoning district on but not where the zoning district is uh drawn. This is from Ms. Thomas.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we when we came up with this, I mean, it, it yeah, I, I would need to look further into that position to your question, Chairman.
The reason it just, the question came up because when I looked at the zoning map, I noticed R four is uh immediately a, uh, like if you take the Baychester as the midway point of where the C seven and R four is. And then further uh to the east of the subject site and to the north is R six that is mapped around. So that's why my question was, is uh, is the subject site within two hundred feet of two of the residential zoning districts, R four, which is immediately a butting, um, which is within hundred feet, and then the R six, which is maybe in some places it's two hundred, maybe it's a little bit more, but that's why I put, put it as a perhaps kind of a question mark. But it's something that I, I just wanted to uh understand if that was factored into the analysis. It seems it was not, but would it affect the, therefore, the location of the signs is then the question that
Well, the thing is, I think when I, I was thinking about why it may be the tech, tech affairs did not raise it, you know, when we revoked the permit. Um, I, it, it's just, it seemed very clear to us that Baychester was part of the highway that this, this was not even going to be an issue. So I, 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 I just, why don't, I don't even, I think that they didn't even go through down that analysis because it was very clear to us um by looking into the, to the official records that um, Baychester was part of the New England throughway. And so that's why we went this direction.
Okay. I mean, that seems reasonable. That was, to you, that was a stronger argument, and therefore you want to look at the, that's fine. Um, I, I wouldn't then ask for any detailed narrative on that because that's the question that is before us, and I would uh then ask. I, I might, I withdraw my question on that part, and we'll just focus on the distance. Um, I do have to say, um, I think everything that you have stated, more importantly, what we all need to be mindful of is the Department of City Planning is the agency that does the alteration of maps, de-mapping, and uh they are the best readers, keepers of the information with regards to a mapping of city streets or even highways that go through and that affects our city network. So I, I do definitely rely on City Planning's uh read of the alteration map, combination of monument maps, or any of the maps that go towards mapping of streets. And therefore, um, I do stand by what City Planning's uh read of the location of the subject site is in relation to the um Baychester Avenue and New England throughway thereby. Um, any other questions or comments uh from uh our board members? Uh, General Bi- Council Vine.
I have one more question.
Hold on. Yes, Commissioner Yun, I do see um uh, Mr. Schnackner's hand up. Uh, I'll get you just in a second. Um, let me first hear uh uh, Commissioner Yun, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, the appellant has already stated they would uh respond regarding this topic, but it would be helpful if both sides could provide some explanation of what monument maps are used for and whether or not we are able to rely on them interchangeably as we do the city map or other maps provided. Because that issue seems to be contested, or at least is part of the discussion, and I think the relevance for us, not just on this case, but going forward, would be useful. So if both sides could respond to that, um, that would be helpful for us. Or at least for me.
I, I think um, this is really, um, it should be I mean, the surveyors, I would be, I mean, first of all, DOB establishes how the measurements are going to be and and how they rely upon, and then it's for the survey to use the appropriate maps to respond to those um dimensions. So I, I think both of them should respond to it. I, I have to say, I did see, you know, look at the comments that DOB had posed and asked the applicant to provide the surveys, and I looked at the surveys that were submitted by the appellant's team in its review. I think it was very inadequate. It was definitely not helpful for me to understand where the New England throughway is and and the distance from that. Um, so um the surveys were not very helpful for me to understand it. However, the alteration maps and other information that has been provided subsequently is much clearer. Um, yes, uh, did
I did, yes.
You wanted to respond to any questions, uh, Mr. Schnackenberg?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair Shanda. Um, just, just to briefly go through some of Ms. Thomas's comments and um, as an aside, Commissioner Yun, we, we will certainly brief on the monuments map. A few points in Ms. Thomas's testimony. So the explanatory notes on the nineteen forty eight map do indicate uh that red ink is establishing um the, the arterial, but you know, we question whether that map, especially when this is in opposition to the map's own title block and to the resolution, actually does that. And, and we would ask DOB to opine on the other areas of the map that are showing those lines, those red lines, realigning the other streets that we submitted just now in our um presentation. And Ms. Thomas, I'll send you a copy of our presentation so you know exactly what I'm asking about, but you know, i- is it DOB's position that everything in red on the map is part of the arterial? We would submit that it is not. Um, we would also note that there, you know, this, this doesn't exist in a vacuum. There are other applicable rules and laws in that there are, uh, you know, the, the the laws around tow trucks, uh, who can tow from an arterial versus who can tow from a city street are, are pretty well established. And, and we would note that, you know, you, if you were on the New York, New One throughway, you would be towed by a tow company if you broke down. Uh, you'd be towed by a tow company that was hired and contracted by this, by the throughway, by the authority, and they would take you right to a city street to Baychester, where you'd be towed by somebody else. Like, these towing contracts are consistent with the notion that the, that the the arterial is distinct from the map. Um, so we will, we will brief the court on that.
Uh, Mr. Schnackenberg, I would be very careful about layering the way various individuals consider what to be an arterial highway versus a city street. And, you know, you could ask ten people, and ten people will open a vein in different ways as to what is an arterial highway now. So I think we need to be consistent, and the, the consistency would be where the city map is defined. Because it could be by who finances the highway, who finances the maintenance. There could be so many ways to splice this thing. I don't think that's the way to go. We are looking at where the property belongs physically in relation to where the boundaries of the New England throughway is, and that is so I really don't want to bring into this discussion any of the other ways of interpreting and figuring out who has jurisdiction where I don't care what the tow company considers to be city and arterial. Due respect to them, but it's the city planning at this point.
Under, understood, Madam Chair, and appreciated. We will, we will not be briefing you on the wide world of tow contracts. But, you know, bringing it back to, to zoning more squarely, you know, Ms. Thomas said that the you know, the establishment of the arterial in the nineteen forty-eight map, that can't be accomplished without the demapping of Baychester. And that is, and this is, this, this, this board is the authority on that. So we'll take it right, right focus on there. You, you can't map the art, the throughway without demapping, with officially demapping Baychester, right? That's, that, that is the case. And so the fact that the nineteen forty-eight map does not demap Baychester, does not purport to demap Baychester, and then the nineteen sixty-six map shows Baychester, we think is dispositive. And we, we will focus our response on that, but that is our, our main contention. And, and, and I, I, I'll save my comments on the monument map and the role of, of city planning in, in the future.
Yeah, I just kind of want to read what City Planning's letter from City Planning's Technical Review Division that deals with all the mapping of city streets. The letter of nine, November twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, the last paragraph says the demapping of Baychester Avenue and the mapping of the throughway to the western boundary of block five-one-four-one is reflected in the subsequent Bronx section maps dated April eleven nineteen forty-eight and September seventeen nineteen ninety-six. As such, the map eastern boundary of the throughway and Barto Avenue and Aldridge Street is the western border of block four-one, five-one-four-one. So.
We, we respectfully submit that that letter is, is, is an overstatement, right? That, that the map does not show that demapping, and you know, City Planning can't simply say that and affect the demapping, right? It has to be an alteration map which has to be, has to be approved by the board, by the Board of Estiment or subsequently. And so we, we, we hope that the Board will not rely too strongly on that letter, which was written in the context of an existing appeal, and has sort of we think overstates that, that point. It may be sort of a results-driven statement by City Planning. And as we've said, you know, this board has the authority to interpret the city map. It need not defer to City Planning.
Madam Chair?
Counsel for counsel.
Yes, Ms. Thomas has her hand up from Department of Buildings?
Yes, Ms. Thomas.
Yes, hi. I just want to make one point I didn't raise. This is something new that I didn't raise. I know that the appellate keeps, he, that he's discussing the nineteen sixty-six map, and I just wanted to briefly discuss the nineteen sixty-six map. And I, I pulled up the map again on, on New York City Street View, and this is the, I also submitted this, this is, this is a copy of what I submitted. I did get it from the New York City Street View. And I just want to show you and point out, you know, the appellate keeps relying on the nineteen sixty-six map, but the nineteen sixty-six map did not change Baychester Avenue. It changed all the area below around this Ash Loop and all this area below. And on, in my submission, I had submitted the map, which you can't see because it's, that's why I wanted to get a clearer picture. But the, the notes, again, the expla- explanatory notes show, say, the thin lines, the thin lines, which it's our position that Baychester Avenue is thin, not, not the bold lines, but the thin lines indicate street lines or easement lines here to for established and hereby retained, meaning that it is not changed. And the dark lines, which is below Baychester, indicate street lines or easements hereby established. So it's our position that the nineteen sixty-six map, and you can, you know, see here, you know, if you zoom in on it, that it does not change Baychester Avenue or the New England throughway. It changes the entire area below. So, and that's why it's our position that it's not reflected in the nineteen ninety-six monument map. And that in order for Baychester to have been changed back to a street, it had to be mapped back to a street, and it's not, it's our position that this, this did not do that. So I just wanted to point out the nineteen sixty-six alteration map and our position on that. And I just want to make one comment about arterial highway. I just want to point out that the New England throughway is in appendix H of the zoning resolution. So I just hope that that's not an issue here, you know, by the appellate. And with that, I have nothing further.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Because I think we have discussed quite a bit, so I want to give the opportunity, we have Commissioner Shada had. Quickly.
Yeah, quickly. Can you take your screen off, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out. Oh, yeah, hey, hold on. I'm sorry. I'm, okay, I got it.
I just want to put this as part of the record. This is the city map online, and, and if you see here, it says street map features, meaning that boundaries for streets. And if you turn this off, you can see that there are no streets whatsoever. There are no street lines. But when you turn it on, you show that the limits for the New England throughway are shown between the fifty-one, forty-one lot, western boundary, and from the other side, it's all the way to the street line of Edison Ave. This is one thing. If, if you click on adapted city map alterations, it's going to give you initiating whatever alteration was done, and if you just click on the lot, it's going to give you the dates, and it's very clear that for the subject area, the subject lot, that the two alterations that were adapted before were in nineteen forty-eight and nineteen fifty-nine. So that means that since nineteen fifty-nine till date, this view that we're looking at is a standard, and that clearly indicates that street lines for the throughway are this and that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President.
I was just saying, shall we go to the public at this?
Yes, yes, thank you. Do we want to take in person first and then? Yes.
We have counsel here.
We have, first, we should go with the council, actually elected. We should go with elected, if that's okay. We always give deference to our elected officials first, and then to our. Elected officials, then the community board, and then the members of the public. No, 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 we do have counsel. I mean, counsel, I'm sorry, I, sorry, Mr. Bus. Yeah, you want to start? Any elected official? Or you want to do counsel first? Elected officials, then comes. Elected first? Any electeds? Okay, okay. Then Community Board, or you want to go to counsel? Community Board? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner and Commissioners of the VSA. There are no further comments I would add, other than I respect and have glad, have heard all your comments and questions, which Community Board, of course.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, sure. Matt Cruz from CB ten District Manager. I'm pleased to have heard the comments and concerns throughout this meeting. Community Board ten stands in support of you and the Buildings Department. Respectfully asks again that you deny this permit. I will make a mention very simply that when this, this operator has, for whatever reason, had these structures up and operating throughout, I guess, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two without permit. So I want to make mention that this application does not deserve any permits, and I'm glad to have heard the comments and concerns that you've all brought up. Community Board ten stands in support of Co-op City. And of course, please deny this permit once more. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you for waiting. State your name for the record. Please state your name.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners of the Board of Standards and Appeals. My name is Jeffrey D. Bus. I'm an attorney with Smith, Bus, and Jacobs, and I have the pleasure of being general counsel for the River Bay Corporation, which is commonly known as Co-op City. Number of my clients are here, the board president and other board members. And we're here to show our support for the position of the New York City Department of Buildings, which we believe properly revoked the permit applications, seven of them, that had previously been at issue involving Baychester Retail three. I'm not going to read the comments because I understand from what I heard this morning that you've all received my comments and you have read them. But I do want to support and reiterate what I heard from the Commission this morning, which is never has this body actually determined or made a finding of fact as to the distance of any of the three signs, whether it's the lollipop sign, the tripod sign, or what's referred to as, as the tower sign. That was not at issue in the earlier cases. The issue there was, what is a sign? And I guess I could use the word creative to opposing counsel, but they tried to argue that twenty-seven signs were not really one sign, even though it would have resulted in, I believe, the largest sign that the city of New York has ever seen, over nine thousand one hundred and seventy-four feet in each direction, which was probably visible for miles if it would have gone up. But the fact is that even the sign that's farthest from the property of the New England throughway, the lollipop sign, is approximately a hundred and thirty-nine feet from what I believe is the proper boundary. And as your counsel Chase Fine pointed out, the street line on Baychester, and as Commissioner Shada just pointed out very well with his display, the property line of block fifty-one forty-one, it is Baychester Avenue. If you ever had the pleasure of going to Co-op City and you tried to exit at exit ten on the throughway or exit eleven, you dump right into Baychester. It's clearly a service road. Just south of Barto, there's a major exit, and just north of Barto, right by Ash Loop, there's an entrance. And in fact, I can't display things from here, but that nineteen sixty-six map shows the entrance way onto ninety-five right at Ash Loop, just shortly north of it. And even further north of that, there is another entrance and exit off of ninety-five onto Baychester. Having been born and raised in Pennsylvania, went to the Bronx one of the first times. I was a little confused trying to find Baychester because if you drive, it actually mysteriously ends on both sides of the New England throughway. And just the way it was demapped, it actually, from a practical point of view, disappears on both sides. I think the law is clear. I think this is really a title issue. The argument that it would be arbitrary and capricious because for the board to decide otherwise is actually reversed. I think it would be arbitrary to pick a line in the middle of a property. You go to the property line, you go to the boundary of the property to determine what the borders are. And I'm not aware of any finding by this board or anyone else that has ever done it. I know years ago I had a case here involving arterial access to the Lincoln Tunnel for an advertising sign. And I believe in that case, the board took, you know, a view that the entrance ways also were part of the arterial highway. So I think the law is clear. I think it would be a violation of law to rule otherwise, and I thank you for your time. Have a pleasant day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. Anybody from public who wishes to speak? Okay, so then we'll go to the oh, you can come up, you can come up. State your name for the record. Here's three minutes, yeah. Two minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is.
We just want to say you have two minutes to make your statement. If you're not able to complete your, so you can submit what you're reading from for our.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my name is Anthony Fields. I am a resident cooperator in Co-op City. And earlier on, I had an apartment that was two blocks from the signage, and it would illuminate my apartment walls at night every ten seconds with different colors. But just very quickly, a timeline of events, the small tri- type, there's tripod and lollipop come online December twentieth. Massive pole construction begins to twenty, December twenty-first, twenty seventeen. February twenty-seven, twenty eighteen, VSA appeals the hearing. DOB introduces the September seventeenth nineteen ninety-six revocation line and from Philip Montgomery. At that point, I thought that the Baychester Retail would have said, you know what? We, we kind of the city of New York didn't give us the accurate information that we needed. And, but now that they have, maybe we should reconsider, maybe try to recoup some of the money that we put into this project. But they didn't do that. What they did was they doubled down to extend the pole with a wind turbine sort of deployment. That wind turbine fell off of the top of the tower and not only that, but they did, they did the construction in the dead of night. Now, I mean, no, what's going on? On, on December thirtieth, twenty nineteen, the wind turbine crashes. The, the tripod crushes a car. So when the wind turbine came down, it destroyed the tripod. And that, that that debacle crushed the car. Then on March nineteenth, twenty twenty, the appellate division. Can I just go a little further? I thought I had three minutes.
Yeah, okay, just if we were not clear, but it was meant to be two minutes, but just you have one.
Okay, so on March twentieth, so this is just like, you know, my personal experience with this entire process. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty, the appellate division first department said that the message signage, signage is illegal based on the nine thousand square foot thing. And on July sixteenth, twenty twenty, New York City Council Clerk filing page thirteen, line, line one through five, said, the lawyer for Baychester Retail said, Ms. Molson has argued well, you know, these are nuisance to the people of Co-op City. Well, first of all, they're not. So he really just told a bold-faced misrepresentation to the judge. I don't know if he was sworn in at the time. But, and so then in winding down August twelfth, twenty twenty-two, revocation of the signage permits. And then after, the full stop work order was put in place on December fifth, twenty-two, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the lollipops came back online. So the, the Baychester Retail just totally ignored, I think, that that the full work stop order was in place. And I have some more stuff that I could leave with you.
Or leave it, or? We could submit it to submit@bsa.myc.gov. Yeah. Can you scan it if it's possible, if you're not? Can you repeat the, can you repeat the email address to which? Sure, it's submit, S U B M I T at bsa.nyc.gov. So anyone here or anybody listening in, if you have any statements that you want to submit for the board to read and have not had the opportunity to to do so, please submit to the email address that Ms. Matthias just responded. We receive, we read every document that is sent to us. Make sure it puts a calendar number and you put a cover letter, okay? Thank you. Any, any, anybody else from public who wants, wishes to speak to this particular subject? Nope, okay, so we'll go to, bring up the site, we'll go to the Zoom. All right. I, if I was not clear, you have two minutes. I mean, our rule is two minutes.
Just, just briefly, I'm a cooperative, Bernard Silitch. I'm a cooperative for over fifteen years in Co-op City. Invariably, over the years, the New England throughway ninety-five be closed for various reasons. And guess what they used as ulterior highway? The service road, which is Baychester Avenue. And therefore, it's logical that that was determined as part of the area as this, as a service road of ninety-five. So. So logically makes sense by the building department to consider that, that this is part of it. And therefore, the question of the 200 feet must be not from the I-95, but actually from Baychester Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person? Oh, okay. Sorry.
Anyone else?
So if anyone else wants to speak online, 2022-69A-758, 2001 Barto Avenue...
I don't see anybody.
Please raise your hands.
I don't see anybody's hand.
Anyone else for this case? No? Okay. We did receive a letter from, a joint letter from Councilmember Kevin Riley, Senator Jamal T. Bailey, and Assemblymember Michael Benedetto. Just it was emailed to us.
When did we...
Oh, yeah. We received it 10:22 a.m. from his assistant. Do you want to read it? Need to read it in the record or you... The commissioners have seen... I don't know.
Have you seen... Have the commissioner seen it?
Oh, you have. Okay.
You have.
Okay. Okay. I will forward that to Mr. Schenkenberg also.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So I just want to say that, you know, I do appreciate a very thorough submission that has been made by both teams, the appellate team and the DOB team. I really appreciate the detailed analysis that's gone in and the review that the board has put in to this particular specific matter. I am of the opinion that I think whatever information that either of you want to provide, it's more providing clarity to what has been submitted and not additional information, new information. I do not think it requires new information. It's more of providing clarity to whatever you may have submitted. So I am of the opinion that we should close this and bring it to a vote at a later date and keep the record open for both the appellate and DOB. And anybody from public wants to put in anything in writing to do so. But I'm going to limit the submission to 10 pages each for both appellate and for DOB. And I would say for the public also. Don't... Because we love to read documents, but too many and repetition does not help.
Chair, I just ask, do you want the appellate to submit first and have DOB...
Yeah. Why don't we take the lead on that one? Yes, I was going to suggest that too.
How long do you need to respond, counsel?
Mr. Schenkenberg?
I think we'd request four weeks to respond.
Okay. And Ms. Thompson?
The same amount, four weeks.
We would also ask, Madam Chair, if you're sitting this for a vote, we would ask for an opportunity for a sur reply to DOB submission unless the hearing would remain open for more testimony. We can respond within a week.
I think we should. Okay. So you want to do four weeks, four weeks and one week?
Four weeks.
We can work out a briefing schedule offline.
Okay. All right. So please follow up with our General Counsel Fine. But basically, we are looking somewhere in August, end of August or September.
I'm sorry. May I also just state, I understand that the board has asked us not to overburden it with additional material. We are obligated to perfect our record in the event that this is appealed. And so we would request permission to submit documents for that purpose in excess of the 10-page limit. That is, it would be exhibits that would be items that were already discussed.
Okay. All right. As my vice chair is suggesting, that we can leave, limit the argument to 10 pages, but the exhibits can exceed that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Spencer.
But don't make it hundreds and hundreds of pages.
Understood, Madam Chair.
Okay. What else?
Anything else from the commissioners? Commissioner Yun? Okay. All right. So I then make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chabetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. What do you want to do? What time is it?
It's...
One o'clock.
Nearly one o'clock.
It's on one o'clock, yeah. Okay. Do half an hour lunch?
Yeah. Let's do a half an hour lunch. So it's from one o'clock, half an hour, so which is 1:30. We'll resume at 1:30 for the remainder of the public hearing.
Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a break for lunch, and we'll resume at 1:30. And we'll start the special order calendar.
Thank you.
Okay. Please mute yourselves and be cognizant...
Okay, we're just about to go back on the record. I see Commissioner Yun is back.
We're good?
Okay, we are live.
Hey ladies, gentlemen, we're back on the record. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May 22nd, 2023. We have continued special order calendar, continued hearing items, item number 1533904BZ15730, Willets Point Boulevard, Queens. Kanzada? Anyone else who do know? Please join us panelists, Mr. Kanzada?
Good afternoon.
Hello. Aye. Raise your right hands. You affirm to tell to do the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions.
Yes.
Yes.
Say your name for the record and proceed.
Naseel Kandada, applicant.
Uh, Divakta Gupta. Um, so we listened to the review session this morning. Uh, we talked to the owner and he's um, he's going to lower the height of the car wash. And then we'll submit photos showing that the height of the car wash arm has it has been reduced. Um, the drums that are stored outside, they'll be moved indoors. Um, right now they're storing uh, used waste oil and used antifreeze. And then we can change our plans so that the traction closure will be PVC um, fence to match the, it'll match the surrounding fence. Uh, rather than using uh, rather than metal, yeah.
Okay.
That's it. As long as the what's held in those bins are held uh, with uh, in alignment with the proper procedures uh, to hold such uh, such chemicals and um, I'm, and they're gonna be held indoors, I'm satisfied.
Yes, DC requires each gas station to accept the used oil uh, on the facility if they have a repair shop. So that is the reason every gas station has to have a used oil tank. For the customer, if they bring in oil, used oil, they can take it and put it into the drums and they can recycle whatever. So that's the reason they have every gas station they have drum, but they used to be an offsite. So we are forcing them that, you know, for BSA requirement, we don't want to have dirty tank outside. We want to have an enclosure. So we are moving them inside now.
Let's see.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, and uh, so with regards to the PVC fence, uh, thank you for responding to Commissioner Artie Brown's comments. And please then revise the drawings to reflect the material.
Sure. Car wash are already lowered. Uh, we have the photos, we'll submit shortly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Um, I'm trying to see if the Commissioner Yun has any questions. No, okay. All right. Um, all right. Uh, let's go to the public then. So the case we're currently discussing is 33904BZ15730, Willets Point Boulevard, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, please dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or our toll free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter webinar ID number eight eight five four six two five nine five three zero and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Uh, once you are in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you are calling in on the phone. Any of her in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand on the bottom of your screen. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Artie Brown? No. Oh, okay. All right. Okay, how long will it take for you to make this correction, uh, Mr. Kanzada?
Yeah, we just had put the drum inside, the car wash is lowered already. So that's it.
Yeah, and we can get the plans fixed in a couple of days, yeah.
One week is enough. If you have the next something on a week or two weeks, I'll take it.
Yeah, I think we have a pretty busy June calendar. Uh, so the next would be July.
Whatever, what can we do?
I think July 10th is the next hearing. So I said, The first hearing in July. Possible. Uh, but we we will, uh, somebody from our office will call you and let you know as to when. Um, are there any improvements that can be done now, like uh, like I said, lowering the car wash arm, all of that between now and the next?
The car wash is already lowered. Um, uh, owner is sending me the photos until, I just spoke to him. So he said, uh, it's taken care of already. So only thing we are doing now to put the drums inside enclosure and we are trying to make the fence on the fashion closure. That's it.
So.
Defense to the law, yes, by the car wash.
And how long will that take to make those improvements?
One week, two weeks, not not much time because the owner is very, you know, functional. Whatever we ask him, he does it. So even car wash, he took care of it. Other things we ask him, he took care of it. So he's active owner. So I don't see problem. I would say two weeks more than enough.
Okay, so one week to revise the plan and maybe uh, by the time we call for, uh, because I'm going to recommend that we close this and we call it for vote. Uh, but between now and the vote, you think all these other improvements will also be in place?
That is right.
Okay, that would be even better. That would definitely give the board uh, enormous amount of confidence and really appreciate then the uh, property owner initiative so promptly and responding to all the comments. And thanks for the team. Um, okay. So we didn't hear anybody, anybody call in. So I'm going to make a motion to close. Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Artie Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 163109BZ11704, Suppton Boulevard, Queens. Thank you, Mr. Gupta, make Mr. Kanzada.
I think um, this is Mr.
Mr. Chrysler is here.
And what about the property?
I don't know his property owner's name, unfortunately. Mr. Chrysler, can you join us, please? Why is my video not coming back? There it goes. Thank you. Join us panelists, please, Mr. Chrysler.
Ram, Ramkaran Samaru is the um, operator of R and R Auto Repair.
Okay, I don't see that name in, oh, I don't see that name in the room. Mr. Chrysler, can you please unmute and join us, please?
Good afternoon.
Okay, can you unmute, please, and put a video on, please?
Unmute, start video.
Okay, Mr. Chrysler is your owner, is the owner here?
No, Mr. Ramakhan does not know what Zoom is and he does not have a smartphone.
Can he call in? He can call in.
He could phone in. Okay, one second.
Can you give the phone in number?
Yeah, I can.
Number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You will enter the webinar ID. Yeah. Follow the prompts. Got it?
All right, Eric, could you dial this number, please? Seven one eight five two nine five 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 two. Yes, Mr. Roy Samaru.
Hi, uh, Mr. Chrysler, could you please not repeat um, numbers on the Zoom? If you need to dial someone's number, please mute before you do.
Yes, of course.
What are we doing? Um, Mr. Chrysler?
Mr. Chrysler.
Is your client, is your client joining or not?
Yes, he's on the phone.
Okay, okay. Um, let me, Mr.
Okay, this is the password.
Mr. Samaru?
I think he's calling, he's teaching his line.
Sorry. Okay, good afternoon.
Uh, Mr. Summer, um, Mr. Chrysler, did you hear what we had stated at the review session?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Now, regards to uh, the notice of affected parties, I do have all of the receipts that show that you know, they they were properly notified.
Uh, I'm glad you were able to do that, but the problem is there's a particular timeline and deliverables of all of these. These notices of hearing had to be sent, I believe, what?
Thirty days.
Thirty days? Thirty days before, was it done thirty days?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thirty days post, it's twenty days before the date of the hearing.
Twenty days before the date of the hearing was sent to all the elected officials, community board and affected um.
Yeah, it was not mailed. No, ma'am, was not mailed twenty days before the hearing.
What's the date of the mailing, sir?
Okay, this stamp was uh, dated seventeenth. And in addition, I have a second set.
What day?
Seventeenth of May, seventeen.
Seventeenth of May, and I also notified them in February of twenty-three.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chrysler, I I'm, I think uh, there seems to be a gap in our ability to explain our process. And uh, I know our office had called you and explained everything to you as to what the.
Yes, ma'am.
And you can always go to our website to fully understand what exactly we are requiring. It's two simple steps to any extension of term. There is no exception to this. You need to make, you need to understand this very clearly. We don't make any exception to it. We cannot, because we are guided by the rules of.
Yes, ma'am.
You have to send notification of filing, initial filing, the initial documents that you have submitted has to be sent to all the elected officials, to the community board, to the Borough President's Office, to City Planning Commission. Um, all of them need to get a copy of that. And that will initiate the community board's ability to hold a public hearing. Second part is that.
That was done. Yeah, the notice of initial filing was sent out February of um, twenty-three.
There, there.
February of twenty-three. Well, the review session that we held last was two twenty-sevens. It was sent less than thirty days before our hearing. That is not acceptable. Uh, it may be acceptable for this round, but it was not. And you did not provide any proof of it. That's the other part of it that is required. You have to submit the proof of the initial of of all the mailing that you did so that we have it on record, because we have to show the record. Anybody audits us, we have to show the record that we are holding this hearing in the manner the rules and regulations are stated.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Now, that is not good enough. You have, it's not showing it on the screen. You have, you have to copy it and mail it, mail it to us or email it to us. Right now, we accept everything in email format.
Fine.
Right? So you, all you have to do is you have to scan it and send an email to it. That way we have a record that says, yes, you have submitted an initial filing. Please, that our project manager did reach out to the community board. That was last week. And the community board has to date not received the application.
Community board, okay. Now, let's see. Community board twelve, one seventy-two, there's seventeen, Linden Boulevard.
I I don't have the address in front of me, but uh, let me see. Hold on. But and then the next part of it is also notifying the same entities, community board, the borough president, the elected officials, city planning commissioner, everybody of the notice of hearing. And that has to be done twenty days prior. And that was not done. Because this gives the public the opportunity to call in on hearing. If they have any issues or if they support your application, they will call in and let indicate that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, Executive Director Costanza.
Yeah, and Mr. Chrysler, I I see you have the receipts that you sent them for the hearing. Did you ever forward a copy of the entire application uh, to them?
That was possibly done in February of twenty-three.
But in February twenty-three, did you notify them that we were just having a hearing? Did you ever send them a copy of the entire application? They they have their own public review processes?
Yes.
So I just wanted to clarify that we're not misunderstanding what.
The package.
Yes.
No, I don't believe I sent the package.
So they wouldn't know why, right? So they wouldn't know what this is about.
Right. So, Mr. Um, Mr. Chrysler, when I spoke to Community District Manager Yvonne Reddick on day seventeen, she said that they had not, you had not appeared before them and they have received not, they received no notices. So that's her comment to me.
Okay, I'm sorry. With this name, the name of this individual is?
Yvonne Reddick. She's the district manager of community board, a community board. Sorry.
Okay, community board, what, twelve?
Four? No, twelve, twelve. I'm sorry, it says four here. Community board, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I mean, I have certified receipts that that um, it was delivered and mailed.
Submit the filing information, that's.
No, I, okay. Notices were mailed, but you know, the the package that was submitted to BSA, no, it was not.
Yeah, because, yeah, Mr. Chrysler, so so upon filing, right, within three days, a copy of the entire application was to, was to be sent out to all the entities. And then once you receive notice of the hearing, right, once we scheduled you for a public review. you receive the public hearing notice that gave instruction um, that within thirty days or something of the hearing, you were to notify those entities of the public hearing, right, and then within twenty days of our hearing, you were supposed to provide us the proof. So I just want to clarify procedurally what I think you're being at, and, you know, I appreciate that you sent that, but, you know, at this moment, this application is faulty, because there's never been proper notification of the filing of the application, and there's been no opportunity for those entities to weigh in or, or provide a recommendation or even hold a public hearing um, that's pursuant to their own requirements.
Okay.
Ms. Reddick, I know very well, and I know that, that, uh, community board is very proactive and involved in, in everything, that's why if we had not, just the fact that we would have not received any communications from them, um, you know, made me question whether they, they were aware of the filing here, so you, you, you may have notified them that we were having a hearing, but they may not know what the application is.
Fine, Mr.
I want to clarify for you, Mr. Chrysler, again, I, I just wanted to, uh.
In all fairness, uh, you know, this was discussed with Mr. Chrysler after our first hearing, and if, uh, Mr. Chrysler had any concerns, he should have every step of the way, should have reached out to our project manager to make sure they were doing it correctly. And I really don't want to take too much of our board's time in discussing. Matters. Uh, so, you know, the fact that this very basic cons- construct of, of the requirement is not being followed is concerning. Second of all, we also, our compliance officer went to the site and observed the issues surrounding this site, it wasn't just based on information that was provided by you, which lacked significantly, uh, but it was also followed up by our compliance officer, because that is the job of the compliance officer, to ensure the prop, project sites that have been given approval with conditions are complying with all the prior board's conditions. And this site, again, continues to fail in being compliant with prior board conditions, as, as you heard from Commissioner Otley Brown. It was a troubled site when she was on the board, when it came ten or eleven years back, and it still remains a troubled site. So you have to work with your, um, uh, client to explain to us wha- what is it that you're unable to do and how can you give us the assurance that you will be able to address these concerns? We are not the cause of hardship, I'm sorry to say that, we have removed the hardship from your, to use that site. That's our job. That's what we did. So I'm really disturbed by that letter, the tone of that letter, and I think something is missing in the way the discussions are happening between you and Mr. uh, Samaru.
Uh, wh- where is your client?
And where is Mr. Chrysler? I don't see him on the screen. Right. Where is Mr. Chrysler?
Mr. Chrysler, can you return?
Oh, this is, uh, okay, I am not going to take too much of the board's time. Um, I'm going to make a motion to close this application, this is not acceptable.
I agree, Chair.
We should have Mr. Chrysler on the line if we're going to close the application.
Yeah, I don't. I agree, but this, this is, can somebody call Mr. Chrysler? This is not.
Ben Roy.
This, this, uh, with regard to, uh, the chair's statement here, um, this is a, an insufficient filing. Uh, entirely. Not becoming of a hearing, because we don't have any proof of notice. Uh, it wouldn't be, in my opinion, it wouldn't be inappropriate, uh, for the chair to, to close the hearing or, or take any steps that she, she deems when we don't even have notice.
Let me just call him. Hold on.
Yes, Mr. Chrysler, please? Mr. Chrysler, can you return to the hearing, please?
I'd like the record to reflect that our executive director has reached out to uh, Mr. Chrysler, Mr. Chrysler had responded, uh, claiming he has technical difficulties and asked that, uh, the.
Yeah, Mr. Frank, on the phone, Deputy Director, I'm here. So are you saying that you can't come back on the, on the Zoom? Okay, so, Mr. Okay, so we'll put that on the record that you was zooming by telephone from dinner.
Does he want to call in?
How are you going to do this? Are you going to call in? Are you going to, we are going to listen?
Uh, Ms. Mathias, Mr. Chrysler can call in if he's having Zoom issues.
The number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. Webinar ID number is eight eight five four six two five nine five three zero. Sorry, four six two two five nine five three zero. Press the pound sign. Sorry, owner, owner also did not call in. No. The owner has not called.
Sorry, mistakenly hit you, your phone, sorry, Mr. Vice Chair.
May I suggest something? If we don't have jurisdiction to close this hearing, because there is no notice, it wasn't noticed, I do believe that as soon as we can, we should bring these guys to compliance and, and, and act on this very.
Mr. Chrysler, can you unmute? Sorry, can I interrupt you, Commissioner?
Yes, I'm unmuted.
Okay, so you're back on the record.
I, I don't.
Yes.
Jurisdiction issue, uh, of that type jurisdiction issue, but, um, we can't even get notice, documents, evidence of notice, I don't think we're going to be able to get this in compliance, because we've asked.
Very basic.
We've asked very, specifically, we had the project manager reach out and walk through the process. We had the, uh, someone from BSA reach out and explain that we need an owner present. It seems like our, 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 our voice, we're falling on deaf ears. Um, and it, and while I understand that this is a, a livelihood, um, there is some serious issues that keep, are ongoing at the site, uh, as Commissioner Otley Brown stated from her, uh, her history with this, at the first time this came before us and the conditions that it was in and how our order, but our, our resolution was in efforts to ensure that these conditions will cease. Now we have, uh, video, uh, we have Ted Ricketts, our, our, our investigator geek went out to site and he showed that the conditions have only gotten worse since the, the grant. Um, and while, uh, it is again, something that, uh, I, I take very seriously when, when, uh, we're, we're discontinuing uh, a, a business, the community deserves better than that. Uh, so, um, I, I believe the chair has a, um, a plan to, to try to get to a certain resolution.
Yeah, I want to, thank you, um, Commissioner Shatank, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Shabeta. Uh, yes, Mr. Chrysler, now that you're back, please state what you have, what you want to do.
Okay, well, the, the owner is under the impression that his property is in near compliance except for the fence. And I've explained to him that he must remove the, 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 uh, the loose, uh, auto um, automobile parts, and he must remove the, uh, the curb cut on Fok Boulevard, but he maintains it's not a, a, a legal curb cut. So, um, he, he agreed to remove the, uh, the mobile trailers on site, but it seems my commands to tell him to bring this site into compliance falls on deaf ears. So, I was asking if the BSA could provide a punch list on BSA letterhead and possibly serve it to Mr. Samaru and explain to him that these are not my rules, the earth, these are BSA rules.
Uh, Mr. Chrysler, you're asking me to do your job.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the job is very simple, you just take the resolution that the BSA had issued ten years ago and just, and just highlight the sections that the board put a condition, that's it. I don't need to tell you what you, what your job is.
Well, yeah, I, I know, but it, the, the thing is, is that I, I'm not sure if Mr. Samaru under, understands the severity of.
Mr. Chrysler, that's for the very reason I had asked the project manager to reach out to you well in advance, so that you could let your client know to call in, so that he too can listen in to what we are telling you. Or he can go and watch the video, I, I'm sure he's, he, he watches YouTube, he can watch the YouTube video, send him the exact link of the YouTube video to be watched. We have.
I'm not sure if he's.
Cannot, Mr. Chrysler, I cannot be sitting here and telling you step by step, taking time away from all other applications who have done their due diligence in filling out the information and done the basic, basics first step, which is your responsibility, not even Mr. Samaru's.
No.
I just, I just want to respond to, um, Mr. Chrysler's request to us to provide a punch list. I believe one of the documents that's required by this board in order for us to even look into an extension of term is something called compliance chart, and this compliance chart is simply what you're asking us to provide, so you should have actually prepared this and submitted it to us.
So, Mr. Chrysler, as, as you are failing to, seemingly, you're failing to let your client know, I also am failing to see how you're not able to do a very basic step, so I'm really not going to take too much more of anybody's time here, and I.
Okay, fine.
I want to say, I, I, you have every, um, you can reach out to the project manager and ask for the questions or even to our executive director if needed to ask for exactly what needs to be done, but I'm at this point where I feel, um, I want to close this for lack of prosecution at, on your end. And, and, uh, and then we are going to notify DOB and DOB will take whatever responsibility they need to do for this site being out of compliance with regards to the zoning resolution and with regards to all the, I mean, once we don't grant this project, this site is operating illegally, so DOB will issue violation, so please let your client know and you be aware of that.
Madam Chair, Mr. Fire Department Liaison John Dick Chief Daly was, is, has a hand up?
Yes, uh, um, sorry, uh.
I just want to add that.
I just want to, Vice Chair to chime in and then I'll go to Chief Daly.
We should, I, 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 I suggest that we send a letter to the owner, uh, advi- a letting, advising him that this is the, um, this is the, the direction of, uh, that his case is going.
Yeah, we will send the letter, not only, um, our counsel, please take note, please send a letter, uh, to the owner, um, a Mr. Ram Samaru, and please take the address from Mr. Chrysler and also send a copy of that letter to Mr. uh, Chrysler stating what exactly our plan of action is because of the lack of, um, uh, prosecution and, uh, and therefore, uh, yes, thank you, um, Chief Daly.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I do, would like to remind the board and also to let Mr. Chrysler know that in the event that the board does, um, vote to not renew the special permit, uh, the fire department has issued four permits on this site. Once the board acts on there, on this application, and if you vote against it, the fire department will revoke the four permits, and because it's, you know, gasoline, we will, uh, padlock the site as well, and that they.
There's no gasoline.
I'm sorry?
There's no gasoline tanks on site, there are no gas, they've been legally abandoned.
Right, uh, well, whatever, you have auto repairs, anything that's at your site that's flammable or combustible, it'll be confiscated and we can, uh, padlock your site, which we had done on a previous, um, auto repair shop in Brooklyn, uh, three years ago. I can't think of the address, but, um, but, Mr. Chrysler, I just to reinforce what the, the chair said, no, if the owner, they're not wanting to cooperate, so we follow the board and the, the Board of Standards and Appeals, we would revoke our permit and we will padlock the, um, the site as well. Thank you.
Fine, understood.
Okay, um, let's go to the public.
Sure. The case we are, oh, General Counsel has his hand up.
Hi, thank you, um, I'd just like to state for the board, um, because the owner is represented, Council's office will be directing that letter to, uh, the applicant's representative, uh, directly and not the owner, uh, but the owner should be copied by the applicant's representative, uh, Council's office will prepare a letter advising Mr. Chrysler that a failure to effectively prosecute this application will result in a termination of rights on this property, which may lead to DOB enforcement action.
Uh, Mr. General Counsel, uh, are we precluded from sending a, a copy to the owner directly?
Uh, no, we will copy the owner, uh, but we cannot directly communicate with a represented individual.
Thank you.
Okay, um, just, uh, make sure you have the correct address of the owner. We can send one to the site.
Okay. So the case we are discussing, I'm going to go to the public, the case we are currently discussing is thirty-one oh nine VZ one seventeen oh four, Supton Boulevard, Queen, should you wish to call in, please call in six four six five five eight eight six five six, or our toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, you will enter webinar ID number eight eight five four six two five nine five three zero and press the pound sign, at the next prompt you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you are calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate in the conversation on this case, then please raise your Zoom hand.
So, Mr. Chrysler, uh, was Mr. Summer able to call in or he refuses to call in?
Yeah, let's give Mr. Sam, I, I'm not sure, I, I did give him the instructions to phone in, uh, I don't know what happened.
Okay, um, so, as, Mr. Chrysler, we are going, I'm going to call a close and I'm going to keep the record open, because we take these matters very seriously and we're going to give you one last chance. Uh, we are going to.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, and, and, and in that moment of period of two months I'm going to give you, no more than that, you have to submit all the documents and issue a notice of hearing and filing and reach out to the community board directly, do not wait for them, because you have spent a lot of time back and forth. Reach out to the community board and, and, and find out when you can present to them and, um, and come up with a proposal that can be attained. There are.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you really want the buy-in of the board, prove it through action. Clean up the site, clean up the site. Right? If you clean up the site, then at least we can say, all right, you know, maybe we can give you some time to fix it, issue or fix that, but right now you have not given us any reason to have any confidence in your client's ability to maintain this site.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been like this for over ten years.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we'll make sure pro- uh, proper prosecution and mailing and notification of, uh, affected parties will be addressed and in addition, we will get the, the site cleaned up.
And if it doesn't happen, as Fire Department Chief Daly said. And if it doesn't happen, as Fire Department Chief Daley said, their permits will be revoked. And once that is revoked and we do not, we deny the grant, DOB will be issuing violations. And then for you to operate from that site will be even more difficult. I don't think we want to.
Yes, ma'am.
But you're not giving us any options.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
So make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yoon?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to keep the record open. And so we have month of June and July, two months. And, and for Mr. Chrysler, you to submit all your documents by August. We will, we will let you know when we are going to schedule this. And please follow up on this if you really want your client to operate its business. And to our counsel, please send the letter out immediately. Thank you.
New cases, item number seventeen two seventy-five fifteen BZ, one fifteen East Ninety-Seven Street, Manhattan. Okay, I think this would be Mr. Friedman? Shelley Friedman? Yes. Yes, you see, there's Elena there too. I don't see Elena, okay. Mr. Friedman, can you join us as panelists, please? I'm mute.
Mr. Friedman, you see him?
Yeah, he's down at the bottom.
Okay. Oh, there, there he is.
I'm mute, Mr. Friedman. Join us panelists, please. There we go. Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good to see you.
Do you have anyone with you, Mr. Friedman?
I'm joined by my colleague, Elena Arastova, but I believe I'll be the only speaker.
I don't see Elena's name in the, in the room.
But we can proceed without her.
I think you can proceed without. Right, raise your right hand, though, Mr. Friedman. I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Miss Madam Chair. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay.
So you heard our statement at the review session, Mr. Friedman?
We did, Madam Chair. These results don't happen without significant guidance from the staff, which we're always appreciative.
Well, we always appreciate getting document applications from you. It's very, it's an easy review. So we thank you.
Thank you. I would like, I would like to add that the school was also appreciative of the original grant. The school, the building is almost finished, but has its back against the wall regarding the September occupancy. So in the event the board votes to close the hearing, we would all humbly request a hearing date at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Yeah. We will, my, my initial thought is to close now and call it for vote on June fourth. Will that be sufficient? Because that's the earliest of, yeah.
School could not ask for more. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Let's go to the public. Okay, the case we are currently discussing is two seventy-five fifteen BZ, one fifteen East Ninety-Seven Street, Manhattan. Should you wish to discuss, please call in. Yeah, so. Six four six five five eight eight six five six. Or the toll-free number is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. The webinar ID number is eight eight five four six two five nine five three zero. And you will press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you are calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to discuss this application, which is two seventy-five fifteen BZ, you will use that little Zoom hand on the bottom of the screen. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
We just have to let the clock run out. There is no submission required on this.
No submission, okay, good. Okay, good. All right, so we were just waiting for the clock to chime in. Motion to close. Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yoon?
Aye.
Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Appeals calendar continued hearing items, item number eighteen, twenty twenty-two dash three BZY, four, forty-nine twenty-three, Second Avenue, Brooklyn. This is Elise there. A lot of talk. Please join as panelist.
Oh, it went just to unmute. It didn't go to panelist.
Oh, no?
Try again, maybe?
Yeah. Do you have anyone with you, Elise?
Uh, no.
Turn your camera on.
Yeah, turn it on. Sorry, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, no better picture than that. You're a little lighty, yeah. You don't have to be sworn in. This is an A case, so you no longer have to be sworn in. A cases, so please state your name for the record and proceed and respond to the board's comments.
Elise Fulladere from Eric Palatnik PC. Thank you so much for your comments. Apologies if it was overlooked, but Vice Chair Shabeta, if we add a sentence that clarifies it's a vesting to the first line of the application, would that be helpful?
That would be.
Apologies if that was overlooked.
No worries. Review session, is there anything that you'd like to add?
So we will do that. And then I don't think there was any other comments, just for clarification.
Commissioners, yeah, if you'd like to add? I'm okay with going to the public, then?
Yeah. Okay, the case we are currently discussing in twenty twenty-two dash three BZY, forty-nine twenty-three, Second Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss, oops, sorry, let me start the clock. I apologize. Dial six four six five five eight eight six five six, or a toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight eight five four six two five five nine three zero. And the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, it is a little Zoom hand at the bottom of your screen. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss. How long will it take for you to make this correction, Ms. Fulladere?
I could add a line today, whatever, whatever is open in your calendar will make it work.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, scares me.
Having heard no comments from the public and no further comments from the board, I propose to close.
We will schedule this for July.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner, sorry, Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yoon?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Item number nineteen, twenty twenty-two, forty-two A, Thirty Page Avenue, Staten Island. Mr. Dale? I'm sorry. You got him in? Thank you. Sorry.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Please state your name. Oh, sorry, you restated your name. Proceed. You don't have to be sworn in. It's an A case.
So noted. I did attend this morning's review session and based on the comments, I don't believe there were any comments. So I'm happy to answer any of the questions that might have come up in the intro.
Does anyone on the board have any comments for the applicant? Having heard no comments from the board, I ask that this be brought to the public, open to the public.
Okay. The case we are currently discussing is twenty-two, sorry, twenty twenty-two forty-two A, Thirty Page Avenue, Staten Island. Should you wish to discuss, please dial six four six five five eight eight six five six, or the toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter webinar ID number eight eight five four six two five five nine three zero. And the pound sign. Once you're permitted, and at the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you are calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to speak on this matter, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your screen.
General Counsel, just a question on this GCL. Would it be, are we in our right to close pending the, pending DOT?
Counsel?
We can look into that and get back to you.
Okay, no one's called in. No one's raising their hands.
Vice Chair, and just a comment to your, your statement, your question there. I would just defer to the board. I would ask that if it could be closed, that the board would consider that. I would also just request that the board consider potentially if Department of Transportation does not issue a letter, even though this application is about eleven months on the record, if the board would consider if we would submit information from the New York City Do-It map that we've done on other comparable cases showing no capital plan on that map, if the board would consider that sufficient to satisfy questions about the capital plan.
So we're going to, we're going to close. I feel comfortable closing. With regard to the, with regard to, we do need DOT review. We'll have, we'll have our project manager reach out to DOT, see if we can expedite this in any way.
Yeah, we did, sorry, we did speak to them last week. They didn't give me a time frame, sorry.
Things are moving, it appears, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Okay, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yoon?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Okay, new cases, item number twenty, twenty twenty-one eighty-four A, sixty-three oh one Amboy Road, Staten Island. This is Mr. Businelli. Mr. Businelli, please join us. Mr. Businelli, how are you? Sorry, I'm professional. Mr. Businelli?
Hi. Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Is there anyone else with you, Mr. Businelli?
Uh, no, there isn't.
Okay, state your name for the record. You may proceed. This is an appeals case, so you don't need to be sworn in.
David Businelli, architect, studio succeed architecture.
Mr. Businelli, were you able to listen in at a review session?
Uh, yes, I did. Yes, I did. And I appreciate the board's comments on this case. Especially regarding the requested parking waiver. We would like to file an application under seventy-two twenty-one to request a waiver of parking. And this definitely was one of the big contention points with Community Board Three. And we would like the opportunity to take care of that.
Just to, go ahead.
Mr. Businelli, you recognize the difficulty you're going to have with the seventy-two twenty-one. Are you sure you need the?
Uh, yes. Well, the, the, the building was designed with the intent for retail. Of course, retail located in a cellar counts for parking. That's what generated the ten parking spaces. You could certainly, with the advice of the owner, make the entire building office space or the cellar office space, and then it would only incur five parking spaces. I mean, the owner has wanted to develop the surplus property for quite a while. I guess shortly after she developed the semis and would like every opportunity to see if we can get this done.
Mr. Businelli, I think we may not have been clear in what we stated. First of all, this is in the South Richmond Special District.
Right.
And based on what I was able to gather from Department of Buildings, the CEO, this was approved through a city planning commission review as part of the South Richmond Special District, which has lot of conditions with regards to its approvals. And there is a restrictive deck in place. So you need to ensure that any development on this site is not going to be contrary to any of the of city planning's conditions and grants and approval of the site plan. Should that be, then you need to go to city planning to get the amendment to all of that. Most importantly, and I think all the board members kind of here was not very sure if you would be able to meet finding D of seventy-two twenty-one, which is self-created hardship. The fact that this, there is a new tax lot that is being apportioned from this existing tax lot is what is raising this hardship would be the, is how it's being, it's going to be appearing, at least at this point to me. I can't speak for the other board members, but that's what is appearing. It is going to be an extremely difficult hurdle for you to cross to be able to justify that it's not a self-created hardship, given that it's part of a larger zoning lot. And the zoning lot includes not just this one tax lot, but seven, seven other tax lots. And, and not to mention all the associate city planning commission approvals, prior approvals. So I will caution you, before you submit an application for seventy-two twenty-one, think through the possibilities. And please note, if you do file for seventy-two twenty-one, you have to submit a new application. And you have to submit, go to DOB for an objection. You have to go to the community board again. You have to do a notice of filing and hearing for the community board, all of that again. And I don't know what the outcome is going to be. And we know the community board is going to deny it again because that was their ground for denying GCL. So please rethink this process very carefully before you decide to submit an application for seventy-two twenty-one. Or I would strongly recommend that you just revise the GCL thirty-five application and make it compliant with the underlying regulation and just see GCL thirty-five.
No, that's, that's fine. I appreciate your advice and the concern. We would certainly thoroughly vet this issue before filing anything. We'll get the city planning records. As far as I saw, the only city planning application approval was for school seats, but I could, I could certainly be wrong. But we're going to look at it and we're going to see. But we, we're gonna look at it and we're gonna see if, if it's worth pursuing. I understand the concern that this is a self-created hardship. But we will, and, and parking has been on everybody's mind from the day that this thing started. There are parking lots that are close by that may meet the provisions to provide off-site parking. But we're gonna look into all these things before, you know, we make that decision. We'd also like the opportunity to hear the, or to see the, the DOT and DEP commentary, uh, which I understand you haven't received yet.
No, we have not.
Okay. No, that, that, this is all fine. And this is something that we have to, have to do. So we certainly want the opportunity to look into all this.
Well, I can only advise based on what I think. Okay. Any questions or comments from any of the other commissioners? Vice Chair? Okay. Let's go to the public.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-one eighty-four A sixty-three oh one BZ. I'm sorry, I apologize, sixty-three oh one Amboy Road, Staten Island. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or the toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight eight five four six two five five, not, sorry, four six two five nine five three zero and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you are calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to discuss this case, which is on Amboy Road, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the small hand at the bottom of your screen. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Um, and, uh, Mr. Businelli, I will and that you may want to talk to our general counsel before you file this.
Sure. Absolutely.
I really, honestly speaking, I do not want to waste any of our time on a process that may not. I, I, I just think it's kind of going in the wrong direction. That is honestly, that's my take on it. Um, I can't speak for the other board members. Oh, Commissioner Otley Brown wants to speak.
I just want to say that apportioning a lot in such a shape and then claiming that that's unique and therefore you can't provide parking onsite for your development is a textbook case of self-created hardship.
Understood. I appreciate the comment and the advice.
I don't see anyone raising their hands. Okay, all right. So this is a procedural question for our general counsel and executive director. Should we keep the record open for the GCL or should we close it and have it refiled on, with seventy-two twenty-one? What's the procedure?
General counsel has his hand up.
Hi, I believe the board should close and, um, Mister, the applicant should explore their options and decide how they'd like to proceed. Um, and at that time, if they decide to file for a variance, we can join this back on the record with that and reopen. Um, and otherwise, if, if the applicant decides to redesign their application so as to not require seventy-two twenty-one variance, uh, we can schedule to reopen and have a continued hearing at that time.
Yes, and Madam, Madam Chair, I, this is Carla Costanza. I, I would only suggest that we, we get a sense of timeline here um, so that we could schedule accordingly. So Mr. Businelli has time to advise with his client and, and determine which way to proceed.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so.
Do you want to, do you want to get a timeline, Mr. Businelli? Do you know how long you'll, uh, before you, how long you'll take, you'll need to decide how you're going to proceed?
Yeah, I think that if we can, if, if I had to come back for a hearing, um, that would be August, I would imagine, or July. Um, but I would need at least that much time for us to thoroughly vet this.
Okay, we could schedule offline. Uh, uh, if anyone has anything more to add?
Uh, Mr. Businelli, uh, you could always reach out to me as well.
Sure.
If you need guidance.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I strongly, uh, I strongly suggest to, to take advantage of the opportunity of speaking with Carla Costanza about, or executive director about, uh, how to proceed.
Will do.
I move to close.
Chair Shonda?
Hi.
Vice Chair Sabeta?
Hi.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Hi.
Commissioner Yun?
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Businelli. Item number twenty-one, twenty twenty-two sixty-eight, thirty-five Herkimer Place, Brooklyn. Stuart Klein, Mr. Klein, can you join us, please? A few people in the room, I don't know.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
You put video on, sir?
I believe it is on, but let me just check.
Don't see you on video.
I will.
Should, should be on the bottom left side of your screen.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Klein, now you have to unmute. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, this is Stuart Klein, uh, Klein Sloick, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, with me today is the owner of the location, uh, the owner's representative, uh, who's doing the construction and two gentlemen from CBRE who prepared the analysis. Let me begin by thanking you for the.
Excuse me, Mr. Klein, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you please state their names for the record?
Okay, that would be Mr. Ashman and Mr. Holiday. And the owner is, uh, is, is Don Minerva, M-I-N-E-R-V-A. And Louis Mio is the owner's, owner's representative.
Okay, if those people would like to join us as panelists and unmute, you, this is an appeals case, so you do not have to be sworn in. It'd be great if they're going to speak or discuss any part of the matter. It'd be great if they had their videos on and their, their screen unmuted, please.
Okay, certainly.
Were you available to, uh, did you hear earlier?
Mr. Klein?
Were you present at review, Mr. Klein?
Yes, I was. Yes, I was. Okay, and, and may I address the board?
Please.
Yes.
Okay, uh, let me go over point by point. Number one, thank you very much for the obvious care and consideration you gave the application. Uh, number two, uh, you mentioned the community board. Uh, we had appeared at community board more than a month ago, uh, to the, before the committee. The committee at the time told us that they likely would not have to present the, the entire board. Mr. Herman, the district manager, uh, contacted us about a week and a half ago, had three minor questions to, for me. I answered them the same day and we haven't heard from them since. I thought the presentation went reasonably well, so I'm rather surprised that they haven't submitted anything yet. Uh, I'll leave it to the board to contact them. And I think it would be inappropriate for me to contact them at this point in time.
Yes, I, um, just for the record, I did reach out. They said that they met on a board, um, land use meeting. They had some questions for you to respond to, and they had not had a full board meeting.
Okay, okay. I, I had submitted responses to their questions. At the time, they told me they weren't going to have a full board meeting. Uh, if they, they do schedule one, I'll certainly be sure to attend. The next question or the next matter brought up was the, uh.
Just a moment. Ms. Matias, is it possible to reach out to the community board this?
Yeah, I will reach out to them again.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Klein.
With regard to the, the building, the building was bought in two thousand and seven. At the time, it was abandoned and a great deal of disrepair. Uh, it's more than a hundred years old. Uh, it was intended from the very, very start to be converted into a transient hotel use group five. Uh, when work started, uh, the engineers looked at it and realized that because of the additional load uh, that the, the building would have to sustain, uh, as a hotel, uh, they decided that they would have to change the structure of the building, uh, into steel and, and, and concrete. And that's why all of that work was done. Uh, I believe that we submitted on page twenty-five and twenty-six of part of the CBRE report, a breakdown of all the costs, uh, both the costs that were spent to date and the cost that we anticipated, uh, to retrofitting it to a hotel or to continuing it, retrofitting it to an office building or continuing it as a hotel. I believe, uh, Commissioner Otley Brown had some questions with regard to that. And I would ask if, uh, she cared to, to speak to, uh, the representative of CBRE with any direct questions she may have.
So just to reiterate what I had said before, I felt that the serious loss conversation, and I'm talking about your statement, not your uh, two appraisals that were submitted, because ultimately your arguments have to be made in the statement of facts and findings. So you should be taking that information about the itemized costs that were undertaken to do the retrofitting and turn that into a serious loss statement that basically uses those figures to create your argument.
Well, it, it, with, with all due respect, I believe that the total expenditures anticipated was approximately eleven million. That we had shown, uh, expenses exceeding eight million dollars, which represented, I was wrong on the calculation, seventy-one percent, not seventy-two percent of the total build-out. So, uh, I don't really, and, and maybe it's, it's my fault. I don't really understand what is you're looking for, because I think all of those, all of those.
Findings, substantial work completed, substantial expenditures and serious loss. So it's not enough to say we spent eleven million dollars, that's it, that would show a loss. Because not all of the eleven million dollars that you have spent or the eight million out of the eleven million is unusable. So you have to craft the argument to show what of that eight million dollars that you spent is lost, no longer usable.
Would not be recovered.
Can't be recovered and your.
Well, the, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm a little confused. The only way it could be recovered is if we, uh, did a retrofit to a, to an office building and that would mean, uh, the loss of a minimum of six million dollars with regard to.
That's exactly what Commissioner Otley Brown is, is asking you to, to put onto paper.
Flesh out with numbers.
Okay, okay. I, I thought it was. I will, I will put it in the statement, facts and findings. That won't be a problem. But, but I believe all of that information was, uh, submitted to you. But I, but I will admit that, uh, it was approximately two hundred and seventy pages long. And after a while, it became rather tiresome to read. So I'll, I'll pull those numbers out, uh, put in whatever additional supporting information I can and resubmit it.
Thank you.
In the statement, just.
In the statement of facts and findings, of course.
Yep.
Also, then I had another question that had to do with including the land and the holding costs for a purchase that took place in two thousand and seven when the permit wasn't issued until two thousand and fifteen. And that should be addressed as to why that's a valid cost going towards the development of the hotel when there was an existing manufacturing building on the site. And it's not clear with the land and, and the holding costs or operation costs of holding that building whether or not that qualifies as a cost of creating the hotel.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. I'll ask, I'll ask, uh, CBRE to address it.
I don't think you need, uh, this, this, Vice Chair Sabeta, I don't think you'd necessarily need those costs in your application. So we might just be a lot faster and easier to pull those out. You def, to me, in my opinion, I see a case that does have substantial expenditures that did have a lot, work completed. We're just trying to, uh, make it for the record uh, so that we can point to the record and show that these things are in the statement of facts.
No, I, I appreciate that and thank you. And as a matter of fact, if I do remove, uh, those two point three million dollars, then the total expenditure, uh, would be approximately thirty-five to forty percent of the anticipated cost, which is still well beyond the threshold as established by the courts.
We are in agreement.
Yes.
Okay, so if I could have two weeks to, to submit that, I think that would be more than adequate time.
Any other questions from any commissioner?
I just want to clarify, when we say two point three million for the acquisition, for the holding costs.
It was one point five million for the purchase and approximately, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars for carrying costs with the interim period from oh seven to fifteen when the permit was pulled.
Okay, so the whole total, maybe I'm looking at the wrong sheet. The total holding cost of two point four six eight million, that's, you're saying of that eight hundred thousand is for the holding period?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, got it. I'm just looking at the summary on page two of the cost and expenditures analysis. So I was looking track of where the two point three came from. Okay, understood. Thank you.
What, what I'll do is, and I'll, I'll, I'll follow Vice Chair's advice, I'll simply withdraw those numbers, recalculate, and it'll come up between thirty-five and forty percent. And I believe, uh, well, the courts have accepted, uh, you, uh, a, a, a minimum of, of like seven to ten percent will be well over thirty, thirty-five percent. So I don't see any problem with that.
It's one of those cases that less is more, Mr. Klein.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and this commissioner, if you can correct the statement for the December second, instead of, uh, December twentieth, that would be.
Uh, surely, yeah. That, I, I, I will admit to being a world's worst typist.
That's okay.
Until I find out, until I, I'm able to find somebody who can take that championship away from me.
And also, if you can bring some pictures or inspection reports for the superstructure, that would be helpful as well.
I'm sorry, what do, what do you want again?
If you can bring into the record some inspection reports, flash pictures, photos.
Oh, yeah, the, 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 the TR ones and the sporting documentation?
No, no, I'm talking about inspection reports that are dated with.
Yeah, I'm talking about the special inspection reports, the TR, the TRs.
I think of what, uh, I'm sorry, if I understand Commissioner Sheta's question. He wants to find out from the inspection reports and/or photos associated with them is how much of the work was completed before the effective date.
The, the TRs are usually filed at the end of the work. The inspection reports are done and filmed on the go. That's why I want to get the inspection reports rather than.
Okay, I believe we, I, we, I think we filed some of them. We'll, we'll supplement it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
One more thing that, uh, one of the commissioners raised, and that is the, uh, the site conditions. Uh, this is a rather, to be candid, rough block. Uh, we, the owner, uh, Mr. Minerva is here with me. As a matter of fact, over the, more than ten years, they sent the crew down there, uh, every Saturday to clean up the area. But, uh, it's been designated by some people in the community as, as a dumping yard. So we try and clean it up every week, but I think it's a fair comment with regard to the fence around it. Uh, we will go there this week and clean that up and also submit pictures of the, uh, of, of the work after we finish.
That would be good.
Any other comments from any commissioner?
I just want to note, there is a series of controlled inspection reports that seem to be dated from twenty nineteen, throughout twenty nineteen and maybe longer. It's a hundred and thirty-five pages of controlled inspections, um, for what looks to be structural work.
I believe that's what you were looking for. Do you want me to resubmit them or?
I did look at this document, but all what I seen before the effective date was just foundation. And I did mention that in the review session. What I said is, all what I looked at was regarding foundation inspection. If you have any of the superstructure elements that were in be prior to the effective date, I would like to take a look at the inspection report.
Sure, whatever we have will give to you.
If not, it's not, it's not a big, if you have.
No, no, I, I, listen, if it's not, it, 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 it doesn't matter how hard it's going to be. If we have them, we'll give them to you. That's all.
Thank you.
That's our obligation.
Any other comments from any commissioner? Now, having no comments, I ask to open this to the public.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is twenty twenty-two sixty-eight, thirty-five Herkimer Place, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or a toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight eight five four six two five five nine five three zero and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in the room, press star nine to raise your hand. Once you're in the room, press star nine to raise your hand, star six two on mute if you are calling in on the phone. If you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your screen. Uh, once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Mr. Klein, how long do you think you need to, uh, submit?
I, I, I don't believe I'll need more than two weeks. This, this has been a rather, this has been a sixteen-year gestation period, and we'd like to, you know, hopefully be able to continue going forward with the project.
Okay.
I sent you text, didn't I?
Yeah, July, I think we have a, we have a very busy calendar on June.
Understood.
And, and the two-week submission won't make it for June either, so July would be the end of July, maybe July, yes. Are you going to recommend closing?
I am going to recommend closing.
Okay.
So, no, we can.
We just have to wait.
I, I think, I, I think we can schedule.
Having heard no, uh, comment from the public or from any other commissioner, I propose to close this application. And pending the, uh, submission of the applicant.
So we'll keep the record open
Right.
uh, for the submission that you have to make. And I, and I.
I, I know, I know this is going to be, you know, uh, taking advantage of, of forbearance, but is there any way we can have late June as a possible return date?
You do not have a hearing date in, uh, late June, there's only one hearing date in June.
Okay.
Uh, June fourth, fifth.
And, and you don't have enough time to submit? Uh, two weeks would be too much time to submit to get on to that. And plus, we still, we, we, it would be wise to, for you to take efforts, uh, whatever, whatever appropriate efforts may be to get, uh, the Community Board response from the Community Board, to work with PSA to ensure that we get something from the Community Board.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with Ms. Matias on that.
Yeah, just for the record, I sent them an, an email asking them to confirm that they received your responses based on our conversation with the Community Board District Manager last week.
Ms. Herman, yeah. Nice gentleman.
Oh, again, I, I ask for a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Klein.
Okay, and the, the date?
We'll get back to you.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much, have a good afternoon.
This concludes, there's no one else, this concludes the public hearing for May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Just for anyone who's left in the room there, if you had not heard your case, it may be on for tomorrow, there's another hearing for tomorrow, May twenty-third. Please look at our calendar. And, um, this can, as I said, this concludes the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three hearing, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you.